Good evening, the Planning Commission for this evening is for June 12th, 2012, is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Sunday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Chair Quinn?
Here.
Vice Chair Flankis?
Here.
Commissioner Goines?
Present.
Commissioner Truesdale?
Present.
Commissioner Moody?
Present.
Commissioner Schlotman?
Present.
Commissioner Bonar? Thank you, Madam Clerk. I call to your attention the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions in the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. All comments made under this item for specific actions will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda, which is called "Public Comment"? If so, you can speak now. Seeing no one, we'll move on to number five. Thank you. Okay, we need to have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of May 8th, 2012.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve the minutes for the meeting, May 8th, 2012.
Thank you, and that motion does pass. Moving on to number six, any items from the Planning Commission's staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Let's move on now to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Chairwoman Quinn, the following items have been requested to be obeyed to the July 10th Planning Commission meeting. They are Items 7, 24, and 25.
Thank you.
And then Item 17, the applicant has requested that item be withdrawn without prejudice.
Thank you, Mr. Gepkeke. Okay. We have a speaker at the podium, Mr. Bob Gronauer. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Bob Gronauer, 83, 95, West Sunset Road. I'm here representing Item 21 for D.R. Horton. We would ask that to be continued for a 30-day period until your next Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Gronauer. We're ready for a motion on holding that item till the next Planning Commission meeting, number 21. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I move that Item 7, Item 24, excuse me, Item 21, Item 24, and Item 25 be held in abeyance to the July 10th Planning Commission meeting, and I also move that Item 17 be withdrawn without prejudice.
Thank you. Please vote. We now move on to the one-motion-one-vote items. The following are items that may be considered in a one-motion-one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings or non-public, or non-public hearings will be opened at this time, at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Starting with number eight, one-motion-one vote is EOT 45057. The applicant is 2010-1 CryVenture, owner Spinnaker Homes. I don't know my Roman numerals. 1X9 LLC, extension of time of a previously approved site development plan review, SDR 27226, for 100-lot, single-family residential development with access on Whispering Sands Drive on the southwest corner of Grand Teton Drive and Tenaya Way, APN 12515101003. U, undeveloped, zone, DR Desert Rural Density Residential, general plan designation, under resolution of intent to RP2 residential plan development, two units per acre, Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Number nine is a vacation item, 45178. Applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas, petition to vacate portions of public utility easements generally located on the north side of McWilliams Avenue, east of Las Vegas Boulevard. This is in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. The other item, number 10, is also a vacation item, 45231. Applicant ovation development, owner Lone Mountain Seniors LLC, petition to vacate a portion of the southeast corner of Rainbow Boulevard in Lone Mountain, Ward 6, Councilman Ross. These are all in the one-motion-one vote. Does anybody want to pull anything, or do we have a motion?
Madam Chairman, the record will reflect on Item number eight, that I will be abstaining because I have represented the applicant before, as well as the principal, the applicant, and a couple of litigations.
Thank you, Commissioner Flankis. Before we do our vote, is there anyone here in the public that wishes to speak on any of these items, number eight, number nine, or number 10? If not, I'll be happy to have a motion on those.
Madam Chair, on the one-motion-one vote, move to approve Items 8, 9, and 10, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Goines. Before we start the public hearing items, I just want to wish our friend Lucian here a happy birthday. You know, it's kind of funny, because he just sits there and nobody ever knows he's here, but he's a really hard-working man. He has four children, and he looks 12, but he's really 36. So, we wish you a happy birthday and many blessings with your family. Thank you.
Madam Chair, for the record, Items 8 and 9 are final action, and Item number 10 will go forward to the July 18th City Council meeting.
Thank you, Director. Okay, we're going to start our public hearing items with number 11, 12, 13, and 14. They're all related, and we'll start with GPA 44653. The applicant owner is Jose Garcia, for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from low-density residential to office at 241 Ballard Drive. This is in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Number 12 is a zoning, 44654, from R1 single-family residence to PO professional office. Number 13 would be a variance of 44656, to allow a three-foot side yard setback where five feet is required, and to allow a three-foot setback where residential adjacency requires five feet along the west property line. Number 14 is an SDR 44655, for the conversion of a single-family residence into 1,750-square-foot office building with a waiver to allow a perimeter landscape buffer width of zero feet along a portion of the west perimeter where five feet is required, and to allow eight feet on the north perimeter side where 15 feet is required, and a corresponding request for encroachment into the Ballard Drive public right-of-way. And, starting with number 11, may we please have a staff report?
Madam Chair, this item was referred back to the Planning Commission due to a noticing error, as you heard this previously. The intensity of the proposed general plan amendment is not compatible with the adjacent low-density residential designation, and will allow uses that are too intense for the surrounding adjacent land uses. If approved, this would allow commercial development to encroach into an established residential neighborhood. The variance for the setback is required as the construction or the addition to the structure was done without permits. In regards to the site plan, staff does not support the requested waivers nor the requested exceptions. The exceptions are to allow mechanical equipment to be located on a sloped roof, to allow three trees where seven are required along the east landscape buffer, to allow four trees where seven are required along the west landscape buffer, and to allow no landscaping in the parking lot, and to allow vehicles to back out of a required parking space into the public right-of-way. This project does not conform to Objective 2.2 and Policy 2.21 of the Las Vegas 2020 master plan, as the applicant is requesting waivers and exceptions of landscaping and buffering requirements, which are intended to mitigate impacts of commercial development that is adjacent to existing residential development. Staff recommends denial of all applications. Please note, we have received additional protests since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Good evening, applicant.
Good evening.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is David Straight, 1223 Heather Oaks Way, and the applicant is Jose Garcia.
Jose Garcia, 241 Ballard Drive.
As he said, we appeared before you two months ago, and so we're on their second visit with us. What we would like to add to our last presentation is that this is a, this is a house that we want to convert to an office building, and we are not asking for a commercial zoning, we're asking for professional office zoning, which is usually an acceptable transition from a residential neighborhood to a commercial one. And in addition to being the transition, it also sets the borders of expansion, so that there would not need to be another transition. We are immediately next to a parking lot that belongs to McDonald's, right on Eastern Avenue, and we do understand that this is an expansion of the commercial zone further away from Eastern, by approximately 70 feet. But we are proposing an office that's going to be fairly attractive. We're also proposing to fix up this lot and make it very presentable for commercial purposes. We're going to build new fences around it. The residence that is immediately next door will not be opposed to it, and our applicant does have letters of support. At the neighborhood meeting, where there was no, no one to show up to object, and as I understand it, there are no letters of protest from anyone. The waivers that we need are basically because it is a house that exists, and the fact that, you know, staff said we're not putting any trees in the parking lot. Well, the model in, in, in the, in the standard, planning standards calls for a tree for every six spaces. We have many more trees than that. We only have six spaces on the site. And the only reason that we were, the main reason we were asking for waiver to the graph, to the landscape standards is because it's, it is, there's, there's abundant planting and trees on this, and this properly far exceeding what the standard would require. They're just not in the exact same places that would happen if you were planning this from, from scratch on a new commercial lot. So, it's, it's not unattractive in our minds. We know that it's run down, and we haven't fixed it up for a long time, but we invested heavily in trying to get this rezoning, and he would like to occupy this with a business office of his own, his own business. It's not going to be a rental property, it's not going to be a commercial C1 or C2, it's not going to have flashing neon lights, or, or any kind of advertising that, that will be offensive to, to the neighbors, and I'd like to turn it over.
Thank you, Mr. Straight. Mr. Garcia, would you like to say anything?
Well, just, it's for me an opportunity that I'm looking to get, since the house, prices of the houses are very expensive. I mean, the mortgage, the outdoor mortgage on that property could be valuable for a commercial or a professional office, and since, could be another option to turn it into a, one point more to the statistics, right now, foreclosure or whatever, because here the house was, as we explained before, it was due to water flow, and is not being used, and is a very bad situation right now. I don't think nobody will be interested on that.
Okay.
So...
All right, well, thank you very much. And we're going to open it up now to the public and see if anybody wishes to talk on this item. Good evening, Mr. Farlow.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street, and I'm against this on every count.
Oh.
There's no shortage of professional office or in, or commercial in, in this area. In fact, there's all kinds of vacancies around here. This house has been out of code, has been in code violation for years. He's been a lousy neighbor. He's built several parts on this thing without any permits at, at all, and now here he comes before us wanting to encroach into the, into the residential neighborhood. The other thing that I, I'd like to have staff explain to me is on Item number 14, where it says the corresponding request for encroachment into the Ballard Drive, I have no idea what he's planning on doing there, but still, we need the residential. This, our area, Ward 3, is the most densely populated ward in the city. We need all the housing that we can, that's possible, especially single-family housing. And to take a single-family house and turn it into a professional office is just not right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll open up to the commissioners. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Schlotman.
I think maybe a few of those, I could be mistaken, I think a few of those improvements were due to a previous property owner, but I met with both of these gentlemen, and I stated that I'd go look at the property and reconsider, and I see that there's plenty of mature landscaping, there's a landscape buffer on one side between the McDonald's parking lot and your property, but with you tearing down the structure that Mr. Farlow was discussing and rebuilding it due to building and safety requirements, we're not going to be able to have any sort of landscape buffer between your property and the resident, residential property next door. Also, another concern, if we grant this as a professional office use, even though Jose Garcia is planning on running his newspaper business with very few customers coming in and out of this particular office, what happens in the future if you sell it? What if it goes to a tax office, or a law office, ticket busters, where people are coming in and out all day long? A lot of the customers will look at the address, and they won't know that they need to go to the rear alley, and that you have eight parking spaces in the rear. All the customers are going to park up here along Ballard and start taking, taking up a lot of the parking spaces in the residence. And the other point, being, if we're setting precedents moving forward by allowing this, I know that the professional office provides a buffer from commercial to residential, creates a transition. I still don't know if this is, this is right. I feel that keeping this residential is probably the best, best use for this property, and I haven't been convinced to the contrary, but I'll listen to my colleagues up here and see what they have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner. Does anybody else wish to speak on this item?
Yes, Madam Chairman. For the, I don't know if staff knows this, or maybe part of the application, how long has Mr. Garcia owned this property?
Since 2005.
Okay, so roughly seven years, and this is the condition we get it. That, that's my biggest concern, is I don't know what revelation's going to happen, that suddenly this property is going to suddenly be maintained well, or, or cared for as, as a property owner. That, I look at this, and I'm going, if it was well-cared-for, and things were done right, and you weren't asking for waivers, you know, then, then the idea that, okay, this is just an extension of the buffer might well be there, but if you look at the master plan on that side of Eastern, it is a straight line. It is, all those parcels that front onto Eastern are exactly what they are, and everything west of that is residential. You're asking us to, to, in the name of a buffer, in the name of some, right now, we have a good buffer, that's worked very well, and you're, you're asking us to approve a, a quasi-commercial, because you're asking, you're saying, you're arguing that office is not commercial, you know, still, it'll be a rental property at some point, or, you know, which to me is a, a commercial venue, and I just look at this as, we're going to waive this separation from the house next door, so then that house is going to come in and say, I'm impacted, I, I have too much noise, I've lost my neighbor, my house, as a residential feel, and then they'll be here with the same arguments you have. I think we always run the risk of when we do these, like Eastern, like Jones, like North Lamb, invariably, every time we've looked at creeping further away from the main street with main arterial access, we put those people in the neighborhood. And even if they're coming, they make the turn here, because you have a business address on Ballard, and they realize they can't park, they can't get there, they're going to go around, they're going to wind up down the, they're going to be deeper into the neighborhood. We're going to encourage whoever's coming to your building to go deeper into that residential neighborhood for, in essence, a commercial stop. And that's where I think this misses the mark, and I, and I won't be supporting it. I think there is plenty of demand for residential, even though there are parts of this town that have overabundance of residential, but well-maintained rental properties make sense in a lot of areas of town, and I think you'd find this, if it was well-maintained, it would have a, a value from a rental property perspective, but I don't see us improving that whole neighborhood by converting this one parcel to a professional office.
Thank you, Commissioner Truesdale. Does anybody else wish to speak on this, or we'll have a motion from Commissioner Schlotman?
Madam Chair, on Item 11, GPA 44653, I would make a recommendation to follow staff's recommendations for denial.
Thank you, that recommendation is for denial. And that passes, the denial passes.
On Item number 12, ZON 44654, I'd make a motion to follow staff's recommendations for denial.
Thank you, that motion was also for denial.
On Item number 13, VAR 44656...
Oh, excuse me, my vote got lost in the shuffle. And that also passes, I apologize, go ahead, number 13.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Number 13, VAR 44656, I would make a motion to follow staff's recommendations for denial.
Thank you, and that motion was also for denial. And that also passes.
And on Item number 14, SDR 44655, make a motion to follow staff's recommendations for denial.
Thank you, and that motion is also for denial. And that also passes.
Madam Chair, those items go forward to City Council on the July 18th City Council agenda.
Thank you, Director. Moving on now to number 15, it's a zone 44705. The applicant is Dr. Horton Incorporated. The owner is RMB Real Estate LLC, from RE Residence Estates to R1 Single Family Residential, at the northeast corner of Rainbow Boulevard in El Campo Grande. This is in Ward 6, Councilman Ross, and staff is recommending denial. Good evening, Mr. Gronauer. Oh, I'm sorry, staff, please.
Madam Chair, the request would permit lots smaller than, and incompatible with the surrounding area, and as such, staff recommends denial of the application.
Thank you. Now, good evening, Mr. Gronauer.
Good evening, Commissioners. Bob Gronauer, 83, 95, West Sunset Road. I'm here representing D.R. Horton in this matter. First of all, what I'd like to do is get your attention to the overhead here, so you can see on the aerial the, the proposed property. The property is actually located just north of Ann Road, and if you take a look on the overhead here, you can see it's, we're actually on the north side of El Campo Grande, and over here, to the west of us is Rainbow Boulevard, and to the east is Rebecca Road, and just to the north of us is an existing residential development called Ambiance. This property is approximately 11.7 acres. It's currently master planned for rural. What that means is you can come in and build up to 3.59 units to the acre. This application that we're asking for tonight is R1 zoning itself. The R1 zoning is just a zoning district of what we're asking for tonight, however, we have a site plan that's in front of you that we intend to come forward with on the tenet of map itself. And before I get into the details on there, what I need to do is give you a little bit of history on this property, and then explain to you, leading up to neighborhood meetings, how we got to this, to this, where we are today. First of all, from a historical perspective, our office and I represented this property about six years ago, when there was a private developer looking to develop this piece of property. They started out with 40 lots. At the end of the day, we came in, and we were approved, what's important to note, for 36 lots to be developed on this same exact property. The neighbors in the area at that point in time sued us, sued the city in regards to the decision of the approval for the 36 lots. We went through District Court, and we won at that level. During that time, from 2006, it took until about 2009, as you're aware, this is when the economic downturn actually hit, and the homebuilding business was not moving as quickly as it did back in 2006. Unfortunately, the property owner prior to who owns this now lost the property in foreclosure, and today it's a, it's owned by another party, the lenders itself. D.R. Horton is coming in to purchase the property, and that's, that's where we are today. So, when D.R. Horton started this process, we came in with one, one neighborhood meeting initially. It turned out to be three neighborhood meetings by the time we got all done with everything. And again, D.R. Horton started out with a site plan on a tentative, proposed tenet of map, just to show the neighbors what they wanted to lay out in an R1 zone, and they started out with 40 lots, they had 36 lots. I'm at least somewhat happy to report to you, in the meeting last night, we had a neighborhood meeting last night that lasted for about 45 minutes, and in advance, we gave the neighbors this plan that's before you on the overhead, and it's a project of 33 lots, okay? The density would come out to 2.82 dwelling units to the acre. What we made a representation to the neighbors, and worked very hard, and actually, my colleague, my partner Tabitha Fittiman, has been very much active and involved in this matter, is we've agreed to, with the neighbors, that when we come back with the tenet of map, if this R1 zone change is approved tonight, that we would come back with a list of conditions that we'd proffer up tonight on the record, but come back with a tenet of map as a public hearing to address those issues at that point in time, because that's the only mechanism that's afforded to us today in regards to trying to work out a negotiation with conditions with the neighbors. So, that being said, I do want to put on the record, and mind you, in the neighborhood meeting last night, we probably had about 30-plus people that were there. Initially, the first meeting, there were 60, yeah, 60-plus, but I do want to report to you, not everybody's in support, but I think I could say a significant majority were in support, or were, were fine with what we were proposing, and so we explained to them the conditions that we're going to add on tonight for the future, for the tenet of map. So, that being said, what I'd like to just mention to you, what we've at least made representations to the neighbors on behalf of D.R. Horton, is number one, that we would be coming back with a tenet of map as a public hearing for the neighbors to see exactly what we're proposing, that the lot counts would be at 33 lots. Now, the 33 lots here that we're proposing to be built on the layout here comes out to be an average of 10,100 square foot per lot, on an average. here, comes out to be an average of 10,100 square foot per lot, on an average. Smallest lot is no less than 7,500 square feet. Actually, the smallest lot is 7,535 square feet. So we showed this plan, we gave it to the neighbors and said, this is a plan that we'd come back with and attend, as a tenanted map, if the R1 zone change is approved tonight. One of their concerns has been on the northern part of our property, as you can see where we have the side lots, they wanted our side lots to be a minimum of 10 feet. We're fine in our tenanted map, we'll show our side yards are going to be a minimum of 10 feet to the house from the, us, from the property line to the north. We agreed to do single-story homes. If you're familiar with the D.R. Horton product, they do a very nice, single-story home, especially when you're dealing with large lot sizes like this, that will look really nice in this area. If you're familiar with this area, it's a definite infill piece of property. If there's ever a good, good enough definition for a picture of a property that's an infill, it's this, this type of property that we have before you tonight. With respect to lighting, they asked us to do coach lighting on the interior of the site itself. You'll see that through the tenanted map as a condition we would be asking that in the future. And then, there was a request that there not be any lights on El Campo Grande and Rebecca Road, and we said that we would put that request in at the tenanted map stage. So Commissioners, that's, that's essentially it. I just wanted to gloss over some of the history of what, where we were, where we are today, and where we plan to go in the future, if we could obtain the approval from the Planning Commission tonight. That being said, I can answer any questions. I don't know if there's anybody here to speak in opposition or support, but I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gronauer. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak for or against this project?
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I'm not in opposition on the rezoning, but what I am going to be more aware of, or, or, or what I really want to see, is the, the footprint of the houses and the orientation of, of the houses on the lot. Because if we're going to meet our 2020 master plan standards, these roofs, and D.R. Horton, they love to have these gobbled-up roofs, and these, 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 these roofs that have all these pitches on them, you can't put a solar arrays on these things. And if you can't put solar arrays on these things, you're going against our 2020 master plan, because they're not going to be sustainable housing. So I am, I'm not, like I say, this rezoning, not against any of the rezoning, no problem. But I want to see the orientation on, on the, on the houses and what they're going to come up with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing and open up to the Planning Commission.
Madam Chair, through you, thank you, Mr. Gronauer. I think you've restated the, the procedural history of this case very well. I've been involved in two of those three neighborhood meetings, and I think there has been a, a lot of compromise on both sides, coming to, to some agreement on this. I would like to ask, through the Chair of Public Works, about what the requirements for street lighting would be along El Campo Grande, as well as Rebecca Road, if you know.
Sure. On the, through you, Madam Chairman, on Rebecca and El Campo Grande, streetlights would be required on one side of the street, and spaced approximately 180 feet apart.
Okay. And the reason I ask about that, Madam Chair, and I want to create a record on this, is this is an interesting neighborhood. We have rural surrounded by, almost surrounded by higher density, and I'm not sure, even though a lot of these rural neighbors would rather not have the street lighting, I'm not sure that's in the city's best interest to waive that requirement. And so although Mr. Gronauer is here stating tonight that that was part of the discussion last night, I, I'm not going to ask for that to be one of the conditions. I don't think we waive that requirement from Public Works when they do want street lighting. I think it adds to the safety and to the beautification of this neighborhood. And I guess the, the only other thing I would mention that was not discussed so far, is that there was some discussion last night at the neighborhood meeting about a 10-foot buffer along El Campo Grande instead of a 6-foot buffer. I'm not sure I agree with that either, because frankly, it encroaches into the lot size. And I, I guess I will hold my, my, my motion on this until I hear from my fellow Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Moody. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Commissioner Boner?
Madam Chair, I, I guess it's kind of obvious that this is a, an awkward shape, true infill property, and those are always tough nuts to crack, in both cases, but you have a decent design layout. I have a question about grading, and I have a technical question from staff of how we, how we tie together the, the proffers that you're talking about, and leave it to a future action for the tentative maps. Perhaps Public Works can help us on the latter. But let me talk first about the, about the grading, or the, the common property line to the north. It seemed to me you have a great ability here to remove storm drainage very easily to the east, south, and west. And I would be concerned to have you, and I'm pretty sure this is a pretty flat site, make a similar proffer to make this north property line, the lot elevations, match or be below that of the properties to the north, so that we don't have a neighbor fencing problem. Those are some of the more difficult issues that, that face planning commissions in general. And if you had to take some earth off, because it proved to be excess, after all your grading, if we can make some kind of proffer in that respect as well, relative to that north property line and the commonality of grade.
We, we will address that in the tenanted map phase as we come through. As I said, there's no way to enforce those conditions tonight on the zoning, but on the tenanted map, I did talk to the engineer, and that's one of the things, we made a representation to the neighbors last night, that at most, it would be equal to their grade, but more than likely, slightly less. And we'll, we'll address that issue as far as the tenanted map when we come through, to show that.
And how do we, how do we get the zoning to you now, before the tenanted map, without losing control?
Madam Chair, the tenanted map does return to the Planning Commission for their review and their, their recommendations as a final action item. All tentative maps do come to the Planning Commission. So you'll have a chance to review it at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Commissioner Boner, did you have anything else to say, sir? Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on this item? If not, we're ready for a motion, Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With no further discussion, I'm going to move for approval of item 15 ZON 44705, with the condition that the applicant will come back with a tenanted map before the Planning Commission as a public hearing item. And at that time, here are the things that I will be looking for. First, a maximum of 33 lots. If we could get to 32, by the way, I'd love it. But I understand the, last night, we, we agreed that there would be a maximum of 33. These would be single-story homes, minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet, with access on Rainbow. This would be a gated community. And one of the things that we did not discuss, but I will be looking for on this tenanted map, is at least an evaluation of extending the pavement along Rainbow to create a transition between the improved and unimproved portions of those two.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. And that motion passes, Mr. Gronauer, with all of the reflection from Mr. Moody for your upcoming visit.
Thank you very much, and I'll see you soon with the tenanted map.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that item goes forward to City Council on July the 18th.
Thank you. Moving on now to item number 16 is SUP 44798. The applicant is Louis A. Martinez, owner, Transwestern Investment Holding Cheyenne Fountains LLC et al., for a beer/wine cooler on sale, establishment use within a proposed 2,400-square-foot restaurant, with waivers to allow a 370-foot distance separation from a church, and 100-foot distance separation from a city park, where 400 feet is required. At 7450 West Cheyenne Avenue, Suite Number 108, this is in Councilman Anthony's, Ward 5. Staff is recommending approval. May I please, what?
Ward 4.
Ward 4. Staff, may I please have your findings on this item?
Madam Chair, staff can support the waiver requirements for the church, as the proposed use is buffered by a mini-storage facility, which separates the, the use itself. In regards to the waiver requirement from, I've lost my place here, from a city park, staff is supportive of that, as the, is separated from Cheyenne Avenue by 100-foot primary arterial. Staff finds the use can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding uses, and recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Good evening, applicant. Please state your name and address for the record.
Luis Alfredo Martinez.
I'm sorry, sir, we, we can't hear you. You got to get a little closer to the microphone.
Luis A. Martinez.
Good evening, Mr. Martinez. Your address, please.
9081 National Park Drive.
Thank you. Tell us about your project. Tell us, tell us what you're going to do with the beer and the wine and stuff.
Yeah, we serve, our restaurant serves only beers, only to enjoy in the table. That's it. We open 9:00 a.m. and close to 9:00 p.m.
Okay. Thank you.
We have 10 years in business. We have another forestor in the hill. That's the face. We never had any incident with any person.
Thank you, sir. Is that all you have to say? Okay, thank you. We'll open now this item to public comment. If there's anybody here that wishes to speak for or against this item, please forward. If not, we will close the item and open it up to the Planning Commissioners. I see no one, so Mr. Martinez, could you stay at the podium? Because we're going to now open it up to the Planning Commission, and somebody might want to speak with you, okay? Thank you very much, sir. We're going to open it up now to the Planning Commission. Okay, does anybody wish to speak on this item?
Madam Chairman, seeing that there's no comments on this, I would go ahead to move to follow staff's recommendations for approval for item 16, SUP 44798, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. That motion is for approval, following all staff's recommendations.
Thank you very much.
Not done yet. Got to watch the vote. You might lose. That passes, sir. Good luck to you, and enjoy, and congratulations on your business. Good evening. It passed.
Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on now to numbers 17 is SUP, oh, I'm sorry, that was withdrawn right on. I got a different thing. Okay, we're going to move on to related items 18, 19, 18, 19, and 20. It's variance 45114, the applicant owner is Sky Point Hotel Group LLC, to allow 74 parking spaces, where 87 spaces are required, and to allow one loading space, where three are required, on 1.83 acres at 5701 Sky Point Drive, APN 12527410004, T-C Town Center Zone, SCTC Service Commercial Town Center. Special Land Use Designation, Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Item number 19 is SUP 45116, for a hotel motel, or motel suites, with a waiver to allow a distance separation of 82 feet from a single-family resident dwelling, where 330 feet is required. And number 20 would be SDR 45115, for a proposed four-story, 55-foot-tall, 87-unit, 50,478-square-foot hotel with waivers of the streetscape and sign requirements of the Town Center Development Standards Manual, including allowing a 65-foot-tall pylon sign, where 24 feet is the maximum allowed. May we please have the staff report?
Chairwoman Quinn, the subject site is currently undeveloped, but was previously approved for a similar hotel in the past. All entitlements for that project have since expired. The current proposal includes a variance for parking. This site, along with the adjacent sites to the east, was first developed as a commercial subdivision, which would allow shared parking among all uses. However, the site has not been developed per the original plan, and parking has not been provided in sufficient quantity for all uses. Therefore, the variance is required to accommodate the shortage. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented, and the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by proposing a development that is larger or more intense than the site can accommodate. In addition, there are, are a number of waivers of the Town Center Development Standards associated with the site and the use, including a reduction in the distance separation required between the proposed hotel and residentially-zoned property, an increase in height, and decrease in setback requirements, and a, and a request to not provide the required streetscape amenities. There are also waivers requested to allow signage that is greater in height and area than is normally permitted. Signage was previously approved through a master sign plan, which became void upon the expiration of the, of the other entitlements for the site. Changes to the Town Center Development Standards, and Title 19, since the previous entitlements, have removed the requirement for a master sign plan at the site, and the requested waivers may be approved as part of the site development plan review. Staff is recommending denial of the request, as the proposed hotel is not compatible with the surrounding adjacent uses or development, as is evidenced by the variance in numerous waivers that are required. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Kepke.
Before you start, Madam Chairman, out of an abundance of caution, I'll be abstaining on items 18, 19, and 20, because I represented clients in litigation against principles of the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioner Flengus. Good evening, Mr. Kemfer.
Madam Chair, good evening, members of the commission. Good evening as well. In 2007, I presented-
Excuse me, Mr. Kemfer, we can't hear you. Could you move that microphone a bit closer? Thank you. Go ahead.
In 2007, I presented this exact same application to the neighborhood, to the Planning Commission, to the City Council. I had neighborhood meetings, we agreed upon conditions with the neighborhood, and we received approval of both the Planning Commission and the City Council. Unfortunately, we let the approvals expire last year through inadvertence. That is why we had to refile. But, so that there was no surprise, we filed the exact same application, seeking the exact same waivers, the exact same development, at the exact same location. And there has been no change in circumstances since that original application was filed, certainly none of which I am aware. As staff is doing tonight, staff recommended denial then, because staff generally does not support waivers or deviations from the code as, as, as their practice. So we very much always respect the opinion of staff. In this particular case, though, that opinion was expressed earlier, and the Planning Commission and the City Council nevertheless approved this project. I didn't have a neighborhood meeting. No neighbors attended, because I assumed that the neighborhood felt that we would be as straightforward now as we were back then, and make sure that all the conditions that we agreed to with the neighborhood would be included as part of the conditions tonight, and they are. Every condition that was agreed with the neighborhood is included in the conditions of suggested approval here, or if approved, conditions of staff. With regard to the variance, the variance was not required last time. We're not exactly sure. I think staff may be right in terms of, of how we got there, but the point is the variance is required tonight. It's a very minor variance, relatively speaking. And as far as the sign package is concerned, the exact same signs, the exact same height, the exact same dimensions were previously approved. But as staff noted, it was then part of the sign package that you had, that went with the application that was filed. When the application expired, then that sign package expired. So instead of having a sign package that corresponded with that application, we now have to file waiver requests. And those waiver requests, again, are, and I, I'm sure staff will confirm this, are no different than the previous approval given both by the Planning Commission and by the City Council. So we would respectfully ask for your approval of this application, and subject to all if-approved conditions, as were imposed in 2007, when this application was- conditions, as were imposed in 2007 when this application was first approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kemfer. Is there anyone here in the public that wishes to speak for or against this item? Please come forward now.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I see it's gonna be a holiday in express, and that's one of Berkshire Hathaways, and they can do no wrong, and that's why I stay with them.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow. We're gonna now close the public hearing and open it up to the planning commissioners. Commissioner Truesdale.
Yes, Madam Chairman. In kind of support of what Mr. Kemfer is, when this came before us before, there was a lot of neighborhood input, a lot of discussion with the business to the south, I mean, to the north, and the businesses to the south. And the applicant at that time went through all of those very difficult discussions, as well with staff, and put forth the, you know, solutions that did receive the planning commission. I understand the situation. There's a lot of properties that, because of the economy, applications get missed. The world is what it is. But this is one that I think the applicant did a lot of work, and nothing out there has changed, except where a few years down the road. And I think this is still an appropriate project there, as it was then with the adjustments made by everybody, and I would support this application.
Thank you, Mr. Truesdale. Commissioner Moody.
With that, Madam Chair, unless there's any other discussion on this, I'm prepared to make a motion. It looks like there isn't.
Commissioner Bonar.
Just one or two thoughts. One is that the sign of 60-foot-high, this is an area that's cut off by the, because of the configuration of the interchange, and it's really an island. And yet, it's far away from the travel lanes, and if you're gonna have a business, you might as well let people know where you are and how to get to it. So I don't have a problem with the sign. I'm sorry, it's not part of a package. And the package idea, even though I would like to know if you have 100% occupancy, what you do with the extra few cars, it was there when you had a package deal and you had shared parking. It's a bit of a concern, but not enough to not support the application on a whole. So I guess I don't have an overall problem with it.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonar. Commissioner-
Just three words: jobs, jobs, jobs.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll now take a motion. Commissioner Moody.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And let me just say, I think this is a great space and an appropriate land use for what the applicant envisions here. And so, beginning with Item 18, VAR 45114, move for approval, subject to staff's conditions.
Motion on the floors for approval. And that motion passes with Commissioner Flengus abstaining.
On the related item, 19, SUP 45116, also move for approval, subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you. That motion is also for approval. And that motion passes with Commissioner Flengus abstaining. Byron, did you vote, or are you right?
I meant to vote yes.
I know you did.
Thank you.
So we're gonna have to re-vote Mr. Kemfer, because Byron was born around. What are you gonna do? Should we vote again? Okay, good.
Okay, and finally, with respect to Item 20, SDR 45115, move for approval, again, subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you. That motion is for approval as well. And that item passes, Mr. Kemfer, all of them.
Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on now to Item Number 19, which is, I'm sorry, Item Number 21, which is a variance 4 or 5.
That one's been a B.
Oh, that one has been a B, too. 21, and which one?
21 has been a B.
22. Onto 22, I apologize, is SUP 40, 45076. Applicant is Rockstar Tattoo Incorporated. Owner is F.A.E.C. Holdings, Rurula, LLC, for a proposed tattoo parlor, body piercing studio at 450 Fremont Street, Suite 109, Ward 5. Commissioner, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Good evening, applicant.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit messed up here. I'm sorry, we need to have the staff report first. I apologize. Jump it ahead, myself.
Although a special use permit is required in the C2 General Commercial Zoning District, there are no minimum special use permit requirements associated with the tattoo parlor, body piercing, studio use. The proposed use is located within an existing commercial center and can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Gepke. Good evening, applicant. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jim DiFiore with DiFiore Consulting at 8550 West Charleston, here on behalf of the owner and also on the applicant for the business. And we agree to the staff's conditions.
Thank you, Mr. DiFiore. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward and state your name and address, Mr. Farlow, for the record.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I would just hope that Neapolis could do something better than a tattoo parlor. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and open it up now to the commissioners. Commissioner Moody? I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner Schlossman?
Yes, Madam Chair, we're seeing more and more tattoo parlors in downtown, and at some point, I don't, I don't know how all of these businesses are gonna be able to sustain themselves, and we're seeing them up and down Las Vegas Boulevard. We've just seen one at the Stratosphere, and we're seeing one over here at Neapolis. I don't have that big of a concern being in Neapolis and the Stratosphere, but one of my main concerns would be, I don't know, looking into possible distance separations or something of the sort for other parts of the downtown, downtown area. And I think we heard city council make a mention of this about a month ago. But nonetheless, being in Neapolis, I think it fits. I hope to see Neapolis come back with a heart-attack grill and quite a few other businesses that are starting to open up there. So wish you luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Commissioner Quine.
I concur with everything the commissioner said. It does seem like it's a, I don't know if it's an oversaturation issue yet, but I wanted to ask Flynn, is it possible that we could start, just like we show, radiuses of payday loans and businesses like that in the area? Can we start to see how many tattoo shops are in the area?
Certainly through you, Madam Chair. With auto title loans, uses like that, we already have distance separations listed in the code. While we don't have a distance separation for the tattoo parlor use currently in the code, they are a special use permit, and as part of the criteria that the planning commission and city council use to evaluate the request, we can look at things, is there a saturation of those uses? And does that start to become inappropriate for the specific location that they're requesting as part of their application? Certainly, planning commission and city council can direct staff to begin to investigate, are distance separation requirements appropriate for the tattoo use, and we'd be more than happy to pursue that.
Yep, I think it's about time to have that conversation. But with that, this is all proper and order, and I think it fits, and I would move for approval.
One comment before we vote on this. Commissioner Quine. I understand the comments with regard to a potential proliferation, and I understand what we've accomplished when we looked at the payday loans and the predatory nature. I'm not a, you know, drop-dead fan of tattoos, but on the other hand, it's a personal choice. And each one of these particular tattoo parlors, as I understand them in talking with some of these operators, they have a, an artist component to them. That tattoo artist may have a following that is different, that one artist can carry the shop and pay the rents and do those things. I think the market will take care of whether this is a saturation issue, unlike payday loans where if the market takes care of it, we all pay too much, too high interest. But I think as soon as we get enough tattoo parlors, we will also wind up with enough tattoo-removal parlors. So this is a jobs-creation-type business. So I think this is a free-market environment, but.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Commissioner Schlossman, are you ready for a motion, sir?
Commissioner Quine.
Oh, Quines, I'm sorry.
Yes. Item 22, SUP 45076, move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you. That motion is for approval. And that passes. Good luck, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, this item goes forward to city council on July the 18th.
Thank you. I'm gonna do something now that I've never done before as a chairwoman. I'm gonna pull Item Number 29 forward. There are people here with personal hardships, and if we could, if the applicant could come forward, and if there's any, and that way we can get you going.
If you go ahead and call.
Thank you. The item is SUP 45269. The applicant is A New Skincare and Sports Therapy. The owner is 222 Rainbow, LLC, for a 1,785-square-foot massage establishment within an existing day spa with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a parcel zone for residential use where 400 feet is required at 222 South Rainbow Boulevard, Suite 210. This is in Councilwoman Tarkinian's Ward. Staff recommends approval, and may we please have the staff report on Number 29?
Chairwoman Quinn, the applicant has an established day spa on which she performs massage therapy as an accessory use, but wishes to expand the size of the massage area above 150 square feet. The site is directly adjacent to single-family uses on the south and west, prompting a waiver of distance separation requirements. However, the proposed use would be located within a building that is part of a larger, established shopping center and will be operated in conjunction with the day spa, which is a permitted use. Staff is recommending approval as the use can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the adjacent residential uses. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Gepke. Good evening, applicant. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Deborah Wesley. The 222 South Rainbow, or would you like my personal or just my business?
Whatever you want to give us.
The 222 South Rainbow, Suite 210.
Thank you. And then, could you tell us a little bit about your project?
Yes.
It's a little bit interesting.
Yes, it is. I'm actually a native of Las Vegas, born and raised, and I've been doing massage therapy with specialized background in sports therapy, and I work with geriatric, and I work with paraplegics, quadriplegics, a lot of the military guys coming back from Iraq and rehabilitating their symptoms like phantom pain. A lot of car accident victims. I work with two doctors here in Las Vegas. One is a chiropractor, one is an osteopath, and they send me chronic cases, some of them 911 cases right after a car accident. I'm trained in a lot of the whiplash and fibromyalgia, some of your more chronic cases. So not particularly just the Swedish massage. It's a little bit more extensive than that. And then, I've been trained by a Japanese master as well, and so that comes into play with a lot of the care that I give and the issues, you know, without, you know, jumping right into surgery, but they're using alternate ways and holistic care to tend to these clients and patients.
Thank you, Deborah. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this item? Thank you. If not, I'll close the public hearing. We'll open it up to the planning commissioners, okay? Thank you.
Madam Chairman, seeing there's no comments on this, I would go ahead and move to follow staff's recommendations for approval on Item 29, SUP 45269, subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you. That motion is for approval. And that passes. Good luck to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, honey. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
So that means you're good to go.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, where are we now? Okay, moving on to Item 23, is SUP 45203. The applicant is Julie Yelarde, owner Dr., LLC, for a proposed animal hospital, clinic, or shelter with no outside pens with an existing building at 601 East Charleston Boulevard. This is in Ward 3, Councilman Coffins, Ward, and may we please have the staff report.
Chairwoman Quinn, the applicant proposes to relocate her existing animal hospital, clinic, or shelter with no outside pens, currently located approximately 160 feet to the east at 701 East Charleston to the subject site. Staff recommends approval as the proposal meets all the required minimum special use permit requirements and is compatible with the surrounding land uses. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Gepke. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dr. Julie Yelarde, and my address is 6870 La Galilean, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Thank you. Do you have any, do you agree with all staff's recommendations and everything looks good to you? Okay, thank you very much. Now, we'll open the hearing to public comment, and Mr. Farlow.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I thought that this is already an animal hospital.
Next door, Mr. Farlow, they're moving next door. Take a peek at the map and come back.
I thought it already was.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Paul Ray, and my address is 8670 West Cheyenne Avenue, Suite 120. I'm really glad for these notices because this application was a big surprise. I represent 24 Animal Hospital at 601 East Charleston. That's the landlord to the applicant. And we were told a very different story than what the commission's being told. We were told that-
Wait, excuse me, did you say you're representing the owner, the owner applicant?
The current landlord of the applicant.
Of that property?
Across the street.
Oh, across the street.
As the last person objecting had understood correctly, this is actually an operating business at 601 East Charleston, I'm sorry, 701 East Charleston, wanting to move to 601 East Charleston. It's an anomaly to have these animal, two animal hospitals right there because the location where they presently are has been an animal hospital and will continue to be one. It's my understanding that the doctor told, I think I lost the sound, can you hear me now? Okay. Okay, thank you. And it's my understanding that the doctor told the landlord that there's two other hospitals around already, that it would be hard to survive in the economy. She's tired of veterinary medicine, and we were notified that she was planning on moving out for these reasons that also-
Mr. Ray, I think your paperwork, through you, Madam Chair, I think your paperwork's pushing down on the mics button.
Oh, okay. You're right. Thank you. Okay, sorry, so then you couldn't hear that. Just to summarize then what I just said, my client is the current landlord of the applicant, and the term of the current lease has not ended, and a proposal's been brought to us that the applicant wants out of the current lease, and the reasons given were that there's too many animal hospitals already in this area. She's tired of veterinary medicine. It would be hard to survive in the economy in this location, and does not have any plans for herself yet. And at the moment, the threat is basically that the landlord is supposed to be let tie and dry with this lease. So it would be an anomaly that to have multiple animal hospitals right in this area, it would be, as they've said, it would be a hardship to add another animal hospital in the area. But if these tenants do move out- But if these tenants do move out, the current owner across the street intends to continue to operate an animal hospital and it's doubtful as far as the success of this proposal and it's not because of not being appropriate for an addition under the representations or even the plans suggested.
Okay, so the bottom line is you're not in support of them-
That's correct.
-coming next door to your applicant, to your guy, because they're going to be competing with your business. Is that correct?
Not just that. We're not really worried about the competition. It's more that the whole thing is just based on a misstate, a contradictory statement of the truth. You know, not knowing the people, I'm, you know, I'm a little reluctant to, you know, I certainly don't want to do any name calling, anything like that, but-
Okay, well, we're going to end it right there because we're not going to name call. And we understand, we get your point and we thank you for coming down. So we'll open it up now to public comment and see if anybody else wishes to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item?
I'm not sure where I'm supposed to be. I'm the owner of the building where Dr.-
Well, first of all, you need to state your name and address for the record.
I'm Dennis Besservi and the address, do you want the, where I, the building I own or my-
Whatever you want to give us. Whatever's on the application.
601 East Charleston, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89104.
Okay.
And I'm the owner of the building that she wants to move into and my understanding is she's going to be leaving this other location, which is next door, and moving into the one that I am the landlord. And so I am very much supportive, of course, and-
I bet you are. Okay, thank you very much. We're going to close the public hearing now and open it up to the commissioners.
Madam Chair, do we, we have no distance separation issue with regard to veterinary facilities, right? Oh, your mics are out?
Through you, Madam Chair, there are no distance separation requirements for that use or from a similar use.
Okay. So what's before us is just, do we feel is an appropriate use for what's being brought before us?
That's correct.
Not knowing any issues with regards to the other landlord or the property owners or whatever other business, I think most veterinarians look at their business model and, you know, where can I locate and where can I service the families and the pets and all of those things. So I understand, as the gentleman raised, there may be some issue as a property owner, as a landlord, that may be different than what we're looking at here. But the fact that both these buildings were formerly real estate offices, now they're both want to be animal clinics, kind of tells us the world the way it's turned. But I don't see anything that, what was presented that would say this isn't an appropriate location for the use that's been requested, and I think it is. So I will support the application as it goes forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Trusdale. Does anybody else wish to speak?
Madam Chair, I drove by the site and I felt the same way as Commissioner Trusdale. I felt the area and that particular building was appropriate and we really can't consider terms of leases. And if there were two right across the street from each other, I still don't see how that would be an issue. And within the next six months, the special use permit on the old building would be expiring. Is that, would that be true?
Madam Chair, through you, it would be one year that the use would expire at the other, at the previous location unless reestablished within that year timeframe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, in reference to item number 23, SUP 45203, I would make a motion to follow staff's recommendations for approval.
Thank you. That motion is for approval. Please vote. And that motion passes. Good luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that item goes forward to City Council on July the 18th.
Thank you, Director. Moving on now to item number 26, SUP 45256. The applicant is the Tensai Group LTD owner, 9440 West Sahara Holdings LLC, for a beer, wine, cooler, on sale establishment use within a proposed 2,400 square foot restaurant with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a synagogue where 400 feet is required at 9350 West Sahara Avenue, Suite 150. This is in Ward 2, Councilman Beer's Ward, and staff is recommending approval. And may we please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, staff can support a waiver of this requirement as the use will be located within a large established shopping center site designed to accommodate a variety of uses, including other similar uses, and will not negatively impact the existing protected use. Staff finds use can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding uses and recommends approval. Please note, we have received additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Good evening, applicant. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, it's Nicole Kelly and my address is 302 East Carson Avenue, Las Vegas, 89101. I'm the property manager here on behalf of the Tensai Group.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Do you agree with all of staff's recommendations?
Yes.
And you'll follow suit? Okay. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward. If not, we'll close the public hearing and we'll open it up to the planning commissioners. Thank you. Planning Commission?
Madam Chair, I'm familiar with the shopping center, frequented it and drove by it recently to see other empty stores in addition to this one. So it's part of a hopeful comeback that we're starting to fill up some of these empty spots. And I just don't see any reason why this wouldn't be a compatible use with the rest of the users in the center.
Thank you, Mr. Boner. Is that a motion? Does anyone else wish to speak on this? Mr. Moody?
With no other comments from the commission, I would move to approve application SUP 45256 in accordance with all staff recommendations.
Thank you. That motion is for approval.
Thank you.
Please vote. That motion passes. Good luck to you and thank you for coming down this evening.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on now to item number 27, which is SUP 45257. The applicant is Stonies North 40. Owner is Centennial Center LLC for a gaming establishment restricted license within an existing 8,264 restaurant tavern at 5990 Centennial Center Boulevard, Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we please have your report?
Madam Chair, the applicant is requesting to add a gaming establishment restricted to an existing restaurant and tavern. Such a use was licensed at the site until March 4th, 2010, when the previous business closed. The proposed use has a history of being active on the site without having a negative effect on the surrounding development. And as such, staff finds that it can be conducted in a manner that is compatible with the surrounding uses and staff recommends approval. Please note, we have received additional letters of support and protest since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Good evening, applicant. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Chris Loudon, 8790 Jake's Place, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Thank you. And do you agree with all staff's recommendations?
Yes.
And everything? You have nothing else to say?
I'm the owner of Stonies North 40.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward. If not, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to the planning commissioners. Thank you. I just want to say for the record, I received a phone call in support of your item from Gary Jaeger Apollo, who said that he just really supports this item. He works with my son and it in no way reflects my vote this evening. So thank you. Commissioners?
Ms. Chairman, I just want to go on the record. I do sit on a board and a couple committees with Terry Sturm, who signed the application. I've never, I have no idea what are interested in this is, but I will vote on this item.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item?
Madam Chair, if there's no further discussion, inasmuch as this was a gaming license, it expired. Under these circumstances, my motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval subject to the conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Moody. That motion is for approval. Please vote. And that motion passes. Have a good evening and travel home safe. Good night. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. We're moving on now to number 28, which is SUP 45258. The applicant is Family Solutions Counseling. The owner is RLD Investments LLC for proposed sex offender counseling facility with an existing psychology practice at 8238 West Charleston Boulevard, Ward 2, Councilman Beer's. May we please have the staff report?
The applicant seeks to add counseling sessions for both, for adult, both individual and for groups limited to more than six participants. The proposed hours for group sex offender counseling are from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Mondays only, as outlined by the previous, by the provided justification letter. Hours for an individual appointments are available from 10:00 to 8:00, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Sundays and Fridays and during the morning office hours Tuesdays through Thursday. Staff recommends approval with conditions as the use can be conducted in a manner that is compatible with the existing office and development surrounding land uses. Please note, we have received additional letters of support and protest since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Good evening, applicant. Please state your name and address for the record.
What am I supposed to?
You need to move that book back because it's turning maybe the mic off. There you go.
My name is Hannah Falls. I'm the applicant and representative for Family Solutions Counseling at-
Excuse me, what was it? Hannah?
Hannah, yes.
Doctor Hannah?
No, just Hannah Falls.
Hannah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Family Solutions Counseling is located 8238 West Charleston Boulevard. And I just wanted to clarify some of the things that are in our justification letter. We actually only want to have groups on Monday evenings. We are not looking to do any individual counseling at this time. So when we do decide to do that, it would be by appointment only. But the purpose right now is just to have a couple groups on Monday evenings so that we can help this much-needed population with the treatment. There's very few, there's very few service providers right now in town and the service is needed. What we did was on, I'm sorry, on June 6, we held a meeting just for the business owners of Aspen Glen Park, or Aspen Glen Plaza, and we tried to address some of their concerns that they had. And the biggest one that we found was important to address was personal safety. So in order to offer them a solution to that particular problem and that concern, we have offered to hire an armed guard service to patrol Aspen Glen Plaza during the time that the groups are in session.
An armed guard service? Okay, I'm not going to go back and forth with you. I can't. I just want to make sure I heard that right.
Yeah, I had offered a guard service. The request was for an armed guard service.
Okay. Okay. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak for again? So it makes, no, wait a minute, we're just not going to run over here. We're going to have, if the applicants could move over to the left and nicely stand over there, and we have two microphones so we can have, if there's other people that wish to speak, we can have one at each microphone. And just to keep this nice and reasonable, we're going to not repeat what somebody else says and we're not going to call names and we're not going to be disrespectful to this type of group. Okay, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Karen Davidson. I live at 8209 OG Drive, which is right behind Family Solutions. I've been at that property, I bought that home four and a half years ago. I have been a resident of Las Vegas since 1964. I am not a native. I have grandchildren. I have children that were all born here in Las Vegas. My concerns, I actually have two questions, which when she said armed guard, my first question before I state my reasons for non-obvious opposition is, are you canceling all tiers in this program? Is everybody familiar with the tiers?
Ms. Davidson, you can direct your questions to us.
Okay.
But unfortunately, I don't know about the tiers, but here's the deal, you can't go back and forth with the applicant.
Okay, that's fine.
Because it's just not. But you can state your concern, which is the tiers, and then what will be happening is one of the commissioners will certainly direct your question because it's a good question. So go ahead.
Okay. So there are, the tiers for sex offenders are tier zero, which are misdemeanors, and also in some cases gross misdemeanors. Tier one is gross misdemeanor and, which is level one, which is a low risk. So zero is a no-risk assessment. They think they're not going to be repeated offenders.
What's two?
Number two is a moderate risk, which is felony. And number three is also felony. These are murders in Las Vegas, rape in Las Vegas, kidnapping in Las Vegas, battery with intent to rape in Las Vegas, or sexually abusing a child under 13 in Las Vegas.
Goodness, is there a tier four?
No.
Oh, good.
There's just these tiers, of which are given or assessed at the time that the offender is convicted.
Okay.
Okay, so we are talking people that have been convicted. In this neighborhood, to the west immediately of Family Solutions is Fulton Place Condominiums. Directly behind is Starburst Townhouses. There's many single-family residences. Laura Jacobson Elementary School is less than a half a mile walking distance.
Right.
Desert Gymnastics is also across the street. Neighbors and friends on the south side of Charleston got no notification because it's a different ward, where Buffalo Highlands and many other apartments, Salerno, which is also in War 2. So my point is, is our neighborhood has many children and teenagers moving about all the time. I have a concern for all of these young people. And finally, this building is 194 of my steps, and I'm only five foot four, to the front door of Calico Jack's Bar.
Oh.
Now, when you talk, when we're talking behavioral therapy, and I'm no PhD, but we all know it's a process that isn't cured overnight, to put people that are, whether court-ordered or seriously trying to help themselves, less than a minute away from the front door of a bar after they've had a group session, not even an individual session, leaves a lot of reason for concern.
Ms. Davidson-
And of course, of course, as a homeowner-
Right.
-I have the obvious concerns about my property values.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate your concerns very much. So thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. And first of all, the only question I have, are these psychologists state-licensed? If they are, I don't understand what the problem is. Because if these, if these clients are on the street, they're under supervision with the parole office and also the doctors. The doctors know more than anybody else about how their clients are going to behave. And I just do not understand this at all. If the doctors are state-licensed, we shouldn't have any concern. In fact, I don't understand why a licensed psychologist or psychiatrist has to have a special use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow.
I mean, if any psychologist in the world ought to have a state, a special use permit, ought to be Donald Johnson that has to take care of me.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Good evening, sir.
Joel Bennett, 104 Crescent Mesa. I've lived in Las Vegas for over 22 years. In 1998, I built a building at 8240 West Charleston, which is- which is thirty feet from this building. I've had the same tenants for over ten years. Two of our tenants are two lady psychologists, and they treat sexually abused children sometimes. That's not their only clientele, but it's some of their clientele. I really don't think that my tenants should treat the children, and thirty feet away, we have sex offenders. I don't think that is a good situation. There are thousands and thousands of square feet of office space in this city. I don't see why we need to put the victims and the offenders so close. I have two more ladies who are tenants, and I'd like for Crystal to come up. These are lady CPAs. During the tax season, they work a lot later than five o'clock. I realize these sessions are six o'clock, or eight-thirty, or whatever. I have ladies who are in that building that'll be there after. As far as having an armed guard, who wants to own a building where you have an armed guard walking around? Not anybody up here, I assure you. As far as how, how long the guard's going to stay, let's say some of these people come up on the bus, they have their session, they go back to get on the bus, maybe the bus leaves, or maybe the bus is twenty minutes later, whatever, how long does the armed guard stay there? Is he going to stay there until ten o'clock at night, till eleven o'clock at night? How long is that going to last? I have concerns. I just don't think that we should have victims and the offenders within thirty feet of each other. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bennett. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Crystal Martin, CPA, eighty-two forty West Charleston Boulevard.
I'm sorry, Crystal?
Pardon me?
Crystal?
Yes.
Thank you.
I've got a letter here, signed by twenty-nine of the tenants of our building and the surrounding buildings, many of them in the building that the landlord owns. I'd like to read the letter. It's not that long. "Greetings. We, the undersigned, are writing to urge you and the other members of the Las Vegas Department of Planning Development Center to say no to the special use permit being requested by Family Solutions Counseling at eighty-two thirty-eight West Charleston Boulevard, to provide counseling to sex offenders within their existing psychology practice. We vehemently oppose this special use permit. We do not want to be working beside those that allegedly committed violent and sexual crimes against others. With most victims being women and children, we feel it is our duty to provide our team with a safe environment. We feel this is a direct threat to our work environment, our safety, and our ability to conduct business in a safe and non-threatening manner. The issuance of this special permit would be a great injustice to a working community that strives to put people to work on a regular basis. As, as our landlord mentioned, we are CPAs. We work long hours during tax season. We work Saturdays, weekends, and we do not feel safe with sex offenders within a stone's throw of our window."
Ms. Crystal, do you have the names and the signatures? Could you give that to the Madam Clerk? Did you keep a copy for yourself?
Yeah.
Because we'd like to keep that for the record, if you don't mind. Thank you for coming down this evening. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward, and if there's other people that want to speak, you can come down now, and kind of, so we can get a feel for how long this is going to go, and then just wait your turn. We do have two microphones, so the pretty lady in the little pink dress can, skirt can come over here, and we'll start with you. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Stacy Hummel. I'm at eighty-two forty West Charleston. I am directly across from the Family Resource Center. My windows face their front door. The concerns that I have are not during the hours that they would be holding the sessions in the evenings, but during the hours that they do not have control over a group that has now been brought into Aspen Glen. Aspen Glen is a very quaint, secluded office complex, and I have been a tenant there for ten years. We're, we've been there that long for a reason, because we love the area, we love the neighborhood, we feel safe in our work environment, and we feel safe when we are having to work late in the evening. We do know that sex offenders do have a recidivism rate of approximately forty percent. That is concerning to us, and so we do feel for our, our safety in this area. Like I said, we are a little secluded. We are, the majority of the employees and tenants are females. And the petition that was just turned in, you will see that there are twenty-six females that have signed that. The rest are males. So, like I said, we do have a concern for that, so I appreciate your consideration in denying this special use permit.
Thank you, and we appreciate your time very much. Good evening. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Carly Smith, thirty-seven twenty-eight Moonlit Rain Drive, Las Vegas, eight-nine-one-three-five. And I am up here to support Family Solutions. I've been a worker in the field in behavioral and mental health for eight years now. I've worked with both women, children, men, who have all been victims on various levels. And, as I said, I'm in high support of this group, because many of you know, it's not the people seeking treatment who are the ones we should worry about. It's the ones who are not. It's the ones who are seeking treatment that we should get behind and support and praise, and do whatever we can to help them better themselves. These groups are to help them become back into society and be contributing factors in society, not to harm anybody. So, like I said, I'm here in support. I have years of experience, and, like I said, the ones that you should be worried about are the ones that are not seeking treatment, not the ones that are actively seeking to better themselves.
Thank you, Carly, very much, honey. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Kristy Depesquale, twenty-two twenty-four Mountain Rail Drive. I'm a licensed social worker, clinical social work intern, have a background working with adult sex offender programs, and I just would like to address the safety concerns. I'm coming from that kind of background. I'm aware of the safety concerns and the emotional nature of a proposed program like this, so I actually don't see these issues as mutually exclusive. We are concerned about the safety of the community as well, and that would be why I would fully support a program such as this. The reality is, is that these offenders do come out of prison and jail and need treatment, and without that treatment, that they do threaten the safety of the community. So bringing treatment programs like this into different parts of Las Vegas, when there is a need for the programs, because there are so few, provides a service that is actually keeping the community safer. So I fully support this proposed program, and I believe it will actually enhance the community.
Thank you very much, Kristy. Have a nice evening, honey. Hello, please state your name and address for the record.
This, is it, okay. My name is Daniela Cooper. My address, five-one-six North Hollywood Boulevard, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-one-zero. I'm here to also support this program, and also applaud Ms. Falls for the initiative. I think as a member of the community, and also a therapist, I embrace the change of human being, the chances that they should be given, and a lot of times, we ignore that, because it is a touch, touchy subject. I understand that, but I think we are trying to, to help. I would be, it would be my pleasure if I could be involved in this program. I'm a pregnant lady, and I will be a mom, and that should be a concern. I think we should keep an open mind to this issue, because we don't walk around town or anywhere knowing, oh, this person is an offender, or this person is not, because we don't know. And all that this program is trying to do is to offer support. It's in the long run, but it's better than sit on your couch and be, you know, with wishful thinking that these people will, one day, get better. So I truly support Ms. Falls on this.
Thank you, Daniela, for coming down this evening. Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we will close the public hearing, and we will open it up to the Planning Commission. Mr. Bonar?
I have a couple of questions, but I'd also, after asking the questions, like to hear what the other commissioners say while I'm mulling this over. First, a question to the applicant, are the clients that come to you, do they come voluntarily or mandatorily?
They're mandated, and they're supervised by probation and parole, who we've worked very closely with, be in constant communication with them.
And in that process, is there record-keeping of attendance and
Yes.
completion and?
Yes.
Okay.
And the program itself runs anywhere from three to five years. It's not a program that just happens overnight.
That's a long period. Another, next question is, I guess it's to staff, if I can pose. We've had several applications this evening that have had distance standards as part of the waiver process, and in each case, we found a way, I don't think we've denied any, I think we've approved all, maybe except that first series of, of issues, that first case that came up. Can you, can you give us any rationale as to the, what goes into the thinking to, to present a distant separation for whatever use we're talking about, whether it's financial or, or this sort of use?
Certainly, Madam Chair, through you, I'll go ahead and respond to that question. Relative to the issue of distant separation requirements, as you'll note in our zoning code Title Nineteen, there is no distant separation requirements listed for the sex offender counseling use. In fact, there are no minimum standards listed in the code for the use, but rather, it does require a special use permit in the C-one and C-two zoning districts. And by virtue of requiring a special use permit, that means that Planning Commission and/or City Council need to look at the proposed use and its compatibility with surrounding land uses, and make a determination if it is appropriate or not. With distant separation requirements that have been adopted for certain uses in our Code of Ordinance, typically, that has arisen out of concerns that has developed over a series of years. For example, we did not have distant separation requirements for our financial institution-specified or payday loan institutions prior to, I believe, two thousand and two, two thousand and four, two thousand and three. I was close. But because of a, a number of institutions coming in and concerns by City Council and Planning Commission relative to, again, that saturation of uses, with many of those locating in the same area, it was felt that there was a great impact to the neighborhood, and that consequently, distant separation requirements would help to spread out those uses and lessen the impact. With the sex offender counseling, as I've already mentioned, there is no separation distance. In fact, we only have one other use here in the city of Las Vegas. However, what we might do, based on the concerns that have arisen out of this hearing this evening, is we might further look at this use, and we might propose additional standards based on the testimony and the concerns that have been brought up here.
If, if I could just follow up a bit before passing it off to the other commissioners, in this case, we have a waiver of, from four hundred to zero feet from a residential use. And I guess the question posed is, if you can't be close to a residence by that distance, you're forcing them into a non-residential area at a certain distance. And, okay, does that mean we don't put any of these counseling facilities in a residential area whatsoever? So they're, they're deemed into a commercial space. This one's, I don't know if it's the specific building or the property line which, which makes it the zero-foot separation, but this is contiguous to a residential neighborhood, at least the overall property line is. And I'm just mulling over the distant separation as it relates to a residence, and what, what we're forced to do is put them in non-residential areas. Do you want to hear from the other commissioners?
Thank you. Before we go any further, I just wanted to, Madam Clerk, put this on the record. I pulled up on the Metropolitan Police website, the crime rate in that area, as well as the sexual offenders that are registered. And in a quarter-mile of this property, in thirty days, the crime is minimal. There, there's really none. I think there were seven small little items. And there are ten registered sex offenders within a quarter-mile living in this neighborhood. So I just want to put that on the record, because I think it's important for further knowledge. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, if I may ask a few questions. First of all, how are your patients transported to you? Are they coming in their own cars, or is there a bus bringing them, or how's this happening? I'm sorry, I can't hear you. You're going to probably have to turn your mic on.
Some of them have their own transportation. Some come on bikes, some take the bus, and some walk. The bus stops directly in front of the complex on both sides of the street.
So there's really no control on their coming and going? Is that a correct statement?
Well, they're controlled by probation and parole. I mean, they do have curfews that they have to meet. The only time they're allowed to extend those curfews is if they have treatment, then, like, on an evening, if we would have a seven-thirty to nine o'clock session, they would be required to be home by nine-thirty, where their curfew's right now might be eight o'clock.
What time can they show up?
They can show up about fifteen minutes prior.
Are they restricted by their probation officers from showing up, like, an hour early or anything like that?
No, that would be what we would have to set with them. They, just like they have the regulations they have to follow for probation and parole, once the sessions actually took place, we would make sure that they understood the rules as far as that. I mean, things are going to happen. People might show up, and then we'd have to deal with it at that time.
And as I understood earlier, they're required to be here. Is that correct?
They are mandated, yes.
Are there any volunteers?
Not sure on that. I, I haven't seen it. I, I'm, would think there might be, but I don't have the answer to that.
Now, you're looking to do this once a week? Is that correct?
Once a week on Monday evenings, about two to three groups in the evening.
And you're going to offer other services the rest of the time at that location?
Yes.
And my understanding is, I think you're going to do about six at a time?
A maximum, because of the size of our rooms, in our space, a maximum of six group members at a time. Not six groups, six group members.
Okay, now, these six group members, are, are they the same group members each time, or are you going to have a different mix?
No, once the group starts, the group goes, it's a closed group, and it continues. And then as more group, as more, there's an increase for more groups. At that time, we will increase groups, and we will rework our schedule to make sure that, because we also work with victims as well. So we want to make sure that they do not come in contact with each other. That's why we have designated one day a week where the office is closed to everybody else, and these groups take place in the evening.
Do I understand you to mean if you have more than six, you may have to form a second group?
Yes.
So you'd probably go on a Tuesday or a Wednesday as well?
No, we would do two groups at six o'clock on Monday, and then one group at seven-thirty. We would start with one at six and one at seven-thirty. If we had to add a third, that's what we would do. We would double up at one of those times. So there would not be more than twelve in the office at a time, in two separate groups.
Is your only control measure on these folks that are coming here, the, just the, the time that they're supposed to arrive in their curfews?
Yes.
Is that yes?
Yeah.
Now, the armed guard that you have, you mentioned that that was a concession. Who was the concession to, as far as having the armed guard?
Who, who did I make that to?
Yes.
One of the ladies in the complex who owns, I, I don't even know if she owns part of my building or not, the, where I rent from, but she had a concern, because she has fifteen female employees working in there. So I had explained to her what I was, you know, we could do. She was the one who asked, she pretty much said it would need to be an armed guard, and I said, okay, well, I'll check into it. Another person also had asked me, well, are you willing to put that on record? And I said that I would put it on record tonight.
Now, the, I believe it was Ms. Davidson talked about the different tiers. If we have a tier-three offender, is that tier-three offender going to be escorted by the probation officer or anybody, or is that tier-three offender going to be able to arrive either by bus in his own, his or her own vehicle?
The thing that we have to remember is that they've all served their time, and now they're, they're trying to restart their lives. So they're not, I mean, even though they're on lifetime supervision, some of them, and some of them are just on probation for a certain period of time, they're not, they don't walk around with the probation and parole officer with them all the time. I mean, they have to take accountability, and that's the main focus of the program. They have to learn to live in society. They have to accept what they've done.
Now, these groups, are they a mixed group of male and female, or are they all same gender?
Same gender.
Predominantly male?
Yes.
And are you going to have any female groups?
I have not seen the need for female groups as much as the need for male. There's just not as many. I have not seen the need for female groups as much as the need for male. There's just not as many. And I'm not saying that they don't offend, I'm just saying there's just not as many that we know about.
Then another question would be, do you mix lev, tier levels in your group?
Yes.
And then you mentioned that for like a tier-three type individual, the accountability, or excuse me, that person's supposed to have his own accountability for getting there and back and to try to assimilate into society?
Yes.
How long after a person's been convicted and is in this program before they're allowed to take that type of accountability?
Well, the accountability comes with the program. There's three different levels to the program. All of Level 1 is, Level 1 focuses primarily on getting them to accept what they've done, admit it, victim empathy and things like that. For the most part, when they come in there, they're angry and they're in denial. So, I mean, we do have, you know, we're gonna have angry clients, but they're there, they're mandated, and they're not violent.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I can ask a few questions of the applicant through you?
Yes, sir.
Are the patients from the general vicinity or all over Las Vegas?
All over Las Vegas. They would be referred by probation and parole.
Approximately how many of these facilities are there throughout town?
From my research, I've found that there is, there's one facility that focuses, focuses on adults. There's another one that focuses on, I believe, strictly juveniles. There's another one that focuses on both. And then there's one lady that I am aware of that does, she also services these clients, however, she does it different. Like her Level 1, she does individual, and then she brings them in groups for Level 2 and Level 3.
And how long is each treatment?
Each treatment depends. Like I said, the whole program can go anywhere from three to five years. What happens is at the end of Level 1, in order to move on, they have to complete a polygraph.
If, if I may interrupt, how long is each treatment on Monday nights?
Oh, I'm sorry. It would be an hour and a half, between an hour and an hour and a half long.
Okay, and just for, for the clarification of Commissioner Flegas's question, are they required to check in or is it just a, just whenever the probation officer has a routine call? Will they, will the probation officer check in every evening at a specified time?
On occasion, the probation officer will come into the treatment center during group times. I, as far as outside of the treatment center, I know that they have scheduled visits, they have to go see them. I know there's designated times where they have to actually go there and then the probation officer will do some surprise visits. I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry.
And is your intentions just to have these maidens held on Mondays, Monday evenings?
In the beginning, our intention is to just have them on Mondays. However, this, this service is very much needed. And because there's not a lot of providers in Las Vegas who do it, we will probably have to increase it. And we were looking at a maximum, it would be of three nights a week. So it could be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday as we grow.
A question for Plannin. If we condition this for Monday nights, that would require a revision to their special use permit in the future?
If that is established as a condition of approval, then if they were to modify that schedule, it would require them to file a review of condition.
Which could be administrative or would come back to the commission?
No, per Title 19, a review of condition application has to be approved by the body who gave final approval.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also have a few questions for the applicant. Have you held a neighborhood meeting on this?
What I did was I had sent out a letter. I actually personally hand-delivered a letter to all of the buildings in the complex. I did not hold a neighborhood meeting. It was just for the business owners of Aspen Glen Plaza, and a few showed up.
Okay. My next question, for the psychologists that work with you, are all of, I, I assume all of you are mandatory reporters?
Yes, we are. And I wanted to clarify, we are not psychologists. When I applied for the special use permit, they told me that that is what this category falls under. We're marriage and family therapists and we're licensed clinical social workers.
Okay, so as therapists, you are mandatory reporters?
Yes.
And there's no exception in this counseling setting with regard to the, the treatment services you're providing?
No, there's not. And that actually brings me back to what you had asked me earlier. Now I remember where I was going with that. We are required to turn in reports every week after the group sessions to the probation officers. And at the end of the month, usually we will fill out a report and send it to them so they know if there's ever an issue or a concern, we just, we can call them directly, but we're in constant contact with them like that. So as far as like signing in, things like that, that's kind of where that comes into play as well.
Okay, so at least with respect to a child, if there was a post-conviction offense that occurred that was revealed during the counseling, you would have a state law duty imposed upon you to report that offense?
Any offenses that occur during treatment, yes. They, their probation is revoked and they are sent back to jail.
Okay.
Yes, and, and that's, and, I mean, there's, it's not just reoffending. I mean, they have a lot of stipulations. They have to follow the curfew, no alcohol, I know Calco Jacks was a concern that was mentioned. They are not allowed to have alcohol or drugs. Any of those things that they consume, anything like that that they do, they will have their probation taken away and they'll go back to jail.
Okay. And finally, my final question, I have a few more comments with regard to the offenders. Are there some who have been convicted of, for lack of a better term, touching offenses versus child pornography? Are you treating both?
Yes, all of it.
Okay. So let me say this. By my count, I show 30 protests received, nine support. There's also been some additional support here tonight that we have heard as well as some protest, as well as the 29 signatures that have been put forth. I understand there's not a, a distant separation under Title 19, and therefore I feel like as a planning commissioner, I'm a distant separator. I have to make a decision about whether this proposed use is appropriate. And quite honestly, I'm not sure yet. I feel like it's slightly premature and therefore my proposal would be to come back on this. I'd like to see this held for 30 or 60 days until a neighborhood meeting can be held. If for no other purpose than to educate some of these business owners and homeowners around you that this is our plan, this is when we plan to do these types of things, these are going to be, be the restrictions, these, you know, we're planning on bringing in guards and those types of things. And let the neighbor, let the neighbor speak and, and you can speak with them. And in fairness, that's what I would like to see. And so without that, I, I'm not going to be able to, to support this tonight until I am convinced that your neighbor, your neighbors have met with you and, and they've been able to explain themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I just, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I just wanna make a couple comments.
You refer to the parole and probation. How many typical cases does the average parole and probation officer handle, to your knowledge?
I don't have that information. I wouldn't even wanna guess it. I would have to look and give you an accurate number.
I would suspect it's a lot.
Probably, yes.
And I, while I, I appreciate your concerns about that if they violate any of these issues, and, and we're not strictly talking about tier-one issues or tier, or zero, it's, as we get up that list, there, the impacts for us, at least for me as a planning commissioner, is what, what potential impact do I, do I vote, support or not support on this neighborhood? The fine lady that lives on OG behind you, there are hundreds of apartments within a quarter of a mile of this site. I mean, I would say a significant number of apartment, multifamily. And if I was just rationally thinking, if, if I was gonna be in a program for three to five years, I'd probably want an apartment near where I had to, to go one or two nights a week.
And that's the other thing, they are not allowed to just live anywhere. Wherever they live has to be approved by probation and parole. I mean, when I tell you they're on supervision, they're on supervision. It has to go for approval. They have to ask, what happens is they have to make sure they're not within so many distance of a park, not within so many distance of a childcare center, no schools. When they do live in apartment complexes, they're not allowed to go to the public pool. I mean, there's so many stipulations on them.
But it, it still doesn't prevent them from requesting to live near where they are going to get counseling. And I, I appreciate the, the concept that they, that there's consequences for bad acts or, or violating that trust that their conditions of release. But I suspect we have a prison system in this state alone with thousands of people that violate that every day, either through getting drugs into prison or, or other things that happen within the prison walls. So I've heard your comments and I, and I appreciate that there's a population that needs, this counseling should happen. But this is probably, as a parent, as a grandparent, this is probably the most basic thing I think can affect a neighborhood.
I agree. And I mean, I'd also like to say, I am a single mom, I have two kids. I understand where everybody's coming from. I really do. I also have worked with this population and I, I just, I see them differently now because I have worked with them and I just feel that they deserve a second chance.
And, and I'm, I'm not saying that, that there may not be a desire to give them a second chance. I manage a lot of office buildings, a lot of shopping centers. I've dealt with thousands of tenants over, in, and I can honestly tell you, as a landlord, as a landlord's rep, this type of use would be devastating to my tenant population. In this economy is one thing, but in a, in a good economy, to put a tenant like this in, in a setting like this, I'm not making decisions for these, the people who spoke here tonight, but I would suspect if they have a significant female population or a population of, of mothers or fathers that have kids, they're not gonna be around there. And I've managed properties where we've had armed security. That doesn't send a good message either. It may, it may solve a short-term problem, but ongoing, it makes the project look like there's more concerns there, so why would I go there? That's what I'm trying, you know, you're, this facility is across the street and I think you've got a recreational facility, the wall climbing or Spock or a place across the street. There, I'm just trying to figure out, I'm not willing to support this this evening. If, if as Commissioner Moody said, you know, there'd be an issue to hold it, that's one thing. But if, I don't believe that there's a good enough reason to allow this in this setting when I can, I can look at the aerial map, I can look at the density, I can look at a huge regional park that we have nearby, an elementary school, and knowing that either people are gonna be supervised or supervised, but they're gonna be on their bikes or walking from just different bus stops to come to counseling. And it, it just, I haven't heard anything that gives, I appreciate the supporters that are here and I know they're in the profession there and they're trying to, we all wanna be politically correct, but I think this is an issue that, that goes deeper than political correctness. I think sometimes you just have to say, this bothers me and I can't get past it. And I'm willing to say, in this case, that may be my view of this. And that's why I can't see how we, we get this location approved the way you're asking.
And I think it makes it hard because if I didn't have a big sign on my door that says special use permit, nobody would know that I was counseling, you know, sex offenders, especially when they all live in the neighborhood and we come in contact with them every day. Some of us sit on the bus next to them. Some of us, they bag our groceries. I mean, they're everywhere.
And it's never a problem till it's a problem, right?
Exactly.
And I just don't wanna be here saying, I openly said this was an appropriate place to potentially have that problem. And that's, that's just my perspective. And everybody, I believe, has a, has their own personal views on this. But to me, as a land use, with my history in dealing with, with buildings, I don't see where this is good for the property, good for the, the real estate owners that are near there and how that's affected. And I, there's no study to say, well, it affects your property values of residents. But I can tell you it affects your value as a commercial property because you will lose tenants over that. Having, having that use identified being near you. So I, I think that's something that, that we need to take into account when we look at compatibility. And those are my comments.
Thank you. I just wanna make two comments. Hannah, first of all, I, I'm compelled by your honesty. I mean, you've really laid it all out there. You lost me with the armored car driving around because obviously you're concerned that you're, you're dealing with dangerous people or you wouldn't pay for an armored car. The second thing, armored, whatever, the second thing that bothers me absolutely the most is you don't know how they're getting there. Are they walking through the neighborhoods? Are they getting off a bus six blocks away and walking? And, and I gotta tell you something, one of the greatest things about sitting up here is preventing something from happening that doesn't have to happen. You can have five neighborhood meetings and you will not see my support on this item in this location. Thank you.
Mr. Bonar, or Mr. Goins, I'm sorry, Commissioner Goins?
Just a couple of comments. I, I kinda would be curious, like Commissioner Moody said, I'd be, I wanna hear a neighborhood meeting and see what people say. But, you know, what are we gonna do with, with, with folks like this? I mean, I, I work every day with, with at-risk. And so, but I work with youth that, you know, haven't finished high school, two, three credits short. But again, you, you have to ask the question, you know, what are we gonna do? And I also represent a ward, Ward 5, which has the Shade Tree Shelter, Rescue Mission, Drug and Alcohol Treatment. You come by Jimmy Gay Park every morning and you see homeless folks with mental issues pushing shopping carts through neighborhoods. You know, but, and, and so when I, when I hear this up on Charleston and Cimarron, it kinda makes me snicker when I hear people come in and, like the neighbor here, she already knows that these folks are gonna come out of treatment and they're going to the bar. And I ask the question, what if none of them drink? You know, so we're dealing with a lot of what-ifs and we can work ourself up so emotionally with the what-ifs that you almost scare yourself to death to the fact that you don't want an armed security guard in the parking lot. But heck, if something broke out, I'd sure want him there. And so what are we gonna do with this portion of the population? It, it certainly fits with what the city says is approvable within the land use code, and that's what we look at, is it, is it appropriate land use? Here are other commissioners, you know, it always boils down to money. You know, sometimes we put money before what we need to do to better society. You know, everything's got a value and a price to it. And this society now has put so much weight on that that we sometimes forego seeing where we need to have the treatment involved. So, but I, at this time, would reserve my comment. And I wanna hear some more, hear some more from the neighborhood about what they, what they feel about this. But I think people are gonna go somewhere. People are gonna be let out of jail. I deal with youth that are incarcerated that come out through reentry. And when you hear people in society say, I don't wanna help this child or, or this child is, is two to three credits short with graduating, so we're just gonna throw them to the curb. We can't do that because we have so many factions of people in society that, that, that we have to somehow come together and resolve some of these issues. And I, I don't think just getting a little bit too excited because it says sexual offender that all of these scenarios that these people gave are actually gonna come true. They're all what-ifs and it could happen, it may happen. But here's the thing, wouldn't it be great if we could sit back in a year and say, nothing happened? Those are my comments.
Ms. Chairman, we aren't talking about people with what-ifs. These are convicted felons, tier-three. They've raped children, they've been involved with sexual assault and murder. And this isn't a damn thing about money, Byron, because I talk about the compatibility of the neighborhood? Please.
Mr. Truesdale, you're absolutely right in everything you said, but the fact is,
Excuse me, we're not gonna fight.
Once the sentence is served, they are released back into society. It's, it's a realism. I, and I agree with you too. They rape, they murder. Would I want it next to my house? No, I would not. You know? No, I would not, you know, but I happen to choose a house in an area that's completely residential and doesn't have any commercial abutment. I agree totally, but what are we going to do? Where are they going to be zoned to be treated, and where are we going to deal with it? That's my question.
And that may be a bigger issue, but what's before us tonight is a compatibility issue. And as planning commissioners, we need to look at, what are we doing to the neighborhood around it? Are we impacting it positively, negatively? Otherwise, we wouldn't have special use permits. We wouldn't have a land use code if we didn't care about how things fit within a neighborhood. Are they compatible with the neighborhood? Are they aesthetic with it? Or do the neighborhoods go on? This isn't strictly a not in my backyard, this is a potential public risk. And if you're 100% sure that this will never happen to somebody, or, or we've done everything possible, then that may be an approach. But I want to analyze this, is we have a density of housing here, we have schools nearby, we have a lot of impact right here, and are we making the right land use decision by looking at a special use permit here? It has nothing to do with a dime, unless cities are going to run one free, because if, if buildings go empty, real estate taxes go down, and our fine staff here will be looking for jobs in other communities. So I'm not talking about the economics of some property owner here, I'm talking about the economics of a community, and how this may or may not have an impact on that, based on a land use discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Truesdale. Commissioner Flengus.
Madam Chairman, first of all, thank you very much for answering a lot of questions that we had of you tonight. Again, to echo the Chairman, you did answer forthrightly all the questions, but I'm going to just kind of put my two cents in. First of all, I do believe this is a not in my backyard type of thing, and it's always going to be not in my backyard type of thing. We need these facilities, but the question is, is this the right fit for this facility? And I really don't think it is at this juncture, because of some of the things I've heard tonight, the, the shape of the parcel, the proximity to high-density residential, proximity to a school, proximity to other, you know, the one thing that really struck me tonight is Mr. Bennett's representations, that they're treating victims, which I know you guys are treating victims as well, but in the shopping, in the commercial center just right next door. But the biggest concern I have is you're dealing with tier-three type offenders, tier-two, and I know you're running the whole gamut, but I talked to you about transportation and the like. And what I'm not hearing is accountability for when these folks are going from where they're staying, and when they show up at your location. There seems to be quite a wide window for them to, and not saying they're going to get in trouble that night, but they are seeing things, and for the lack of a better term, it could amount to a recon, and I hate to say it that way. But what I'm trying to say is, you know, it would probably, wherever this location is, if they're under supervision of parole officer, probation, or parole officers, as the case may be, there should be some type of control that says, I'm leaving this location now, and I'm going to your location, and they're, and if they're not signing in by such-and-such time, then they're violated. That's, you know, really has to what's, what has to happen. And when they sign out from your location, they better show up at the location they left from, within a certain amount of time, figuring it takes 15 or 20 minutes, whatever the case may be, from location to location. But I'm not comfortable with the accountability as far as the transportation goes. The armed guard is a nice thing to have, but that really, to be honest with you, only protects that immediate facility, because if they leave your facility, walk down the street, your armed guard's not going to have any idea what's going on, none. And so, one of two things, I think you might want to relook your location, or maybe follow Commissioner Moody's recommendation, to try to educate your neighbors and give them a better understanding of what you're trying to do. But I would highly recommend you address some of these accountability issues for, as far as transportation, and their ability to loiter around in that area. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to support this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bonar, sir.
Yeah, I've taken this all in on both sides of the issue, and I appreciate the candor that has been expressed. For one, I don't know that a, that a community meeting is going to, going to bring anything different six or eight weeks from now. And so, I just, I guess I'm going to make a stab at denying the application. Again, the armed guard, you know, half hour before, hour and a half afterward, again, it's, it's a nice offer, I don't think it protects the neighborhood the way it would need to be. I think the optimum place for such a use is a freestanding building at the end of a, of a public transportation route, and a walled-in bike path, but we don't have anything like that. And I yet think that while we have to have this type of function in the community for the rehab of those, of those folks that need it, this is not the right location, so I'm going to move to deny SUP 42269, excuse me, 45269, deny the application.
45258.
I'll repeat that number.
Thank you.
SUP 45258, I recommend denial.
Thank you, the motion is on the floor. For denial, please vote. A yes vote would be for the denial. Thank you, your application has been denied.
Madam Chair, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. We're going to take about a five-minute break, and we'll be back.
Well, that's. Shows the dangers we're seeing. I like the, I like the, you know.
We'll be getting started again in about five minutes. Thank you. Ready? Thanks. Let's wrap this evening up. Moving on. Thank you. We'll be moving on now to item number thirty, which is ROC four, five, one, three, five. Applicant owner Aguila Centro Familiar Cristiano. Review of a condition of an approved site development plan, SDR three, six, seven, eight, seven, to delete condition number four, that requires all onsite improvements to be completed in conformance with the overall site phasing plan date stamped twelve, ten, oh, nine, at fifty-three, fifty-five Madre Mesa Drive, Ward five. This is in Councilman Farlow's Ward. Staff is recommending denial at this time, so may we please have your staff report, Mr. Kepke.
Chairwoman Quinn, the subject site is approved for the construction of a church with construction to occur in phases. All perimeter landscaping was required by condition of approval to occur in the first phase, to provide buffering of the church activities from the surrounding adjacent residential neighborhoods. Although landscaping has been installed along the north and west perimeters, the applicant is seeking to delay the installation of the required landscaping along the south and east perimeters until Phase Two. A required eight-foot screen wall has been constructed along the south and east perimeters. Staff recommends denial. This request of the applicant has not provided any timeframe for when the Phase Two improvements will take place, and the subject landscaping is intended to provide an adequate buffer between the church site and the adjacent single-family residential development to the south and east. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you very much. Good evening, applicant. Please state your name and address for the record.
Matt Katie, four, oh, five Southeast Fifty Second Avenue.
Good evening, Matt.
Good evening, Council. Just to bring you all up to speed, within the last few months, we uncovered the problem. We have a multi-phase project, and there's a conflict on the plans. A lot of the site work in the area that this landscaping takes place, you can see on the pictures, isn't set to happen till Phase Two. Unfortunately, the trees along this area are set to be done at Phase One. So as, if you're familiar with construction, we moved all the way through the process and got down to the last couple of steps when we uncovered that this area was not ready for the trees yet, in which case we presented it to planning and that brought us to where we are today. As of today, the church has moved in under the condition of a temporary CO. All the inspections were passed. They just gave us a temporary CO based on this one issue. All the other landscaping is per plan and a hundred percent done. So far, we did have a neighborhood meeting with both Sunburst and Smoke Ranch Villas, which are the two neighborhoods that are adjacent to us that would be divided by this. Both of them are in total support of it. We've become good neighbors with them. They did attend the first service, and I think you all should have letters from both of the homeowners association in support of our project. At this point, we've gone above and beyond. We were able to correct some errors on an intersection. We've done some additional landscaping. We repaired some walls. So we've done a few things there to be good neighbors, and the neighbors have reciprocated at the meetings that we held with them, that they supported us with our problems that has come up. I know that the two biggest concerns from the planning's point of view is the timing and then also a way to pin us down to make sure this gets done. First, in reference to the timing, because we're a church, I just can't tell you we're going to do it in a year or two years. I can't commit to you because of funding, church growth, and a lot of things outside of our control. But to that point, you do have an ability to hold us to this. If you guys remember when you first approved this project, we asked for the Decatur intersection and also the sewer line on Michaelway to be tied to Phase Two, not done on Phase One, so it became more affordable for the church. All we're asking is that these landscaping borders would be also pinned to Phase Two. So in order, before we would be able to receive a certificate of occupancy on Phase Two, these three conditions would be met. You've already approved two of them. We're just asking for the third one to be approved. The reason that would hold us accountable is the third phase, the second phase is a school, and we can't receive funding for the school until we have a certificate of occupancy. So in like a retail building where you don't have the option to come back and hold them to these promises, you would actually have us, you could hold us to it very clearly.
Okay, so thank you very much. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this item? Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, two, forty North Nineteenth Street. Because trees take the longest to get established and grow, the trees should have been put in the first thing. Before anything should have gone in, the trees should have been in. Here, we've been there, what, since two thousand nine, was it?
Yeah.
Those trees should have been up and shaded in the area.
Up and blooming. Thanks, Mr. Farlow. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll open it up to the planning commissioners at this time. Thank you.
Chair.
Mr. Bonar.
Todd, if you'd be able to make one more comment?
Brief.
Brief.
Quick.
One of the opposition postcards you received was over a minor question, and we've actually resolved it now, if that's of any help to you.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Mr. Bonar, sir, Commissioner.
And the question about the tree planting early on the south or east boundary, you would have had to do what with grading to put it in final shape that would probably allow that set of trees to be retained even during construction of a second phase? What does that present to you as a practical problem?
I can't even imagine you guys would recall this site from over a year and a half ago. The, we had to bring in an amazing amount of fill dirt because of the poor soils there. So if you look at some of those pictures, you'll see a grade difference of over three feet between the existing soils and the new soils. To compensate for that and also to take the rain runoff that flooded Alfred and a couple of the other roads, along that border, when it's finalized, I don't know if you have it as an exhibit, is basically an eight-foot buffer off of the block wall. In that is a drainage area for the water coming through, the tree line, and then about a two-and-a-half-foot retaining wall. We couldn't do it at the beginning because of the massive amount of site work. In construction, you typically don't bring a company back twice, so you do all your landscaping at the end. So although it's ideal, it's not very cost-effective to break it up. At the end, it is pretty good. The reason why we've done it that way is, if you recall, at the very first meeting, the neighbors' concern was that kids jumped over the block wall. So instead of abutting that grade difference close to the wall, giving them something to jump over, we've actually kind of made like a moat around the property. Does that clarify it?
Yeah. I'm, excuse me for saying this, but I have a soft spot for churches that are made to do the improvements, especially ones that have a rationale to be delayed. And I understand that, you know, it'd be nice to have a time from you, and I don't know if you're able to bond something like that, that it'll eventually happen. But I think if you had some mechanism other than stating a date certain for a phase, that might save the fact that it'll eventually be landscaped.
Two points to that. A, because it's an onsite improvement, I do not think I can technically bond for it. I could give you a date. The problem is, is there's so many circumstances outside of our control. I can tell you that the lender and the governing bodies of the church were in town, walked the project, loved the project, so there is talk of it. But I don't want to allude to the fact that I have any sort of a date. I can tell you that the reason why the church was selected for this location and designed in such a way is with the ultimate goal of having a private elementary school there. And in order to have that and receive funding for it, I would have to have a CO from you on that second portion. And like we've stated before, you've tied my Decatur intersection improvement in Madre, or Michaelway sewer line to it. We're just simply asking you tie this to it also. And at that point, I couldn't go past go without.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners wish?
Yes.
Miss Commissioners Schlossman?
Madam Chair, through you, I have a question for Public Works. Is this project bonded? Because typically, when offsite improvements occur, a bond's required, and doesn't only include the offsite, it also includes the onsite streets, fire hydrants, and other utilities. Can you comment on that?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. This site does have an improvement bond along with it. I'm not a hundred percent sure of all the details, but because these aren't private residential streets, those get bonded for. Private onsite improvements typically do not get bonded for. I know there is a drainage easement through here, and we will have some things for the drainage easement to be bonded, but I don't know all the specifics on this project. I can say we do have an improvement bond. It will not be released until the improvements are in.
Thank you.
Do you, would you like a definitive answer on that?
No. Did you?
Sure, through you.
Sure.
Okay. We actually have four bonds, because we broke all the offsites into four different items, two of which got completed on Phase One, and those bonds have been released. Two more bonds are for the Phase Two, because they're offsite improvements, and that gave the city and the county a little bit of comfort that as long as we're bonded for it, eventually we'll have to do it. And then we tied it into the CO. Because this is, I, I'm sure we could bond for it somehow, but technically, you can't bond for it because I'm not required to do it until Phase Two on the drainage, whereas the trees go, if you can see those pictures, where the trees would be planted, it's an, it's almost impossible because of the grade. So it's kind of a catch-22. I mean, the county and the city were phenomenal to work with on negotiating the first round of bonds. I just don't think it'd be possible on this one. But we do currently have four bonds.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Goines?
No more questions. I'd like to make a motion on item thirty for approval of ROC four, five, one, three, five. I think the applicant has demonstrated and made his case, but I think dealt with Matt from the beginning on this, and he does what he says.
Does that include the trees?
Yes.
I'm thinking.
If it's of any help, I can walk you through the exhibits to show you the conflict.
It's okay. We've already voted. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
And that motion passes unanimously, so you better put those trees in.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this item goes forward to City Council on July the eighteenth.
Thank you. We're moving on to item number thirty-one, which is SDR four, two, four, four. The applicant is Lexus of Las Vegas. The owner is AAG Las Vegas LLC. Major amendment of an approved site development plan Z zero, one, one, five, nine, six, two, in parentheses, for a waiver to eliminate portions of the required perimeter landscape buffer for the installation of vehicle display pads along Sarah Avenue at sixty-six hundred West Sahara, APN one, six, three, zero, two, four, zero, two, zero, zero, three. This is in Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward, Ward one. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have your report at this time?
Chairwoman Quinn, this request would allow for the reduction of the required landscape buffer along Sahara Avenue to provide display areas for vehicles for sale at a new car dealership. This reduction in landscape area is approximately three thousand, three hundred and sixty square feet. Development standards, including the provision of landscape buffers, are intended to promote improved design and enhance site planning of commercial and industrial development that will contribute to the overall attractiveness of the city and to promote design and site planning, which furthers the goals of the city's general plan and enhances the vision of the city. Staff recommends denial as the proposed reduction of landscape buffer area is inconsistent with the requirements of Title nineteen oh eight and will have a negative visual impact on the surrounding adjacent development.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. O'Connor. Could you please state your name and address for the record, sir?
My name is William O'Connor. I'm the facility director at Lexus of Las Vegas, sixty-six hundred West Sahara Avenue, eighty-nine, one, forty-six.
Thank you, sir. Could you please tell us a little bit about what you think you might want to be doing over there?
Back in two thousand six, the Lexus, the management, upper management at Lexus received a notification from the city of Las Vegas to remove the existing eight cars that were parked in the buffer zone. So that's what I did, and I covered the existing pavers with landscape stones. In August of two thousand eleven, the upper management brought it to my attention that there are other dealerships, many dealerships along West Sahara Avenue that are now, and even today, are parking vehicles in their buffer zones. So they wanted me to look into it and find out if we could get the okay to park the eight vehicles in the buffer zone. So that's the reason why I'm here for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak for or against this item? Good evening, Mr. Farlow.
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, two, forty North Nineteenth Street. The solution to this is not to allow Lexus to put their cars in the buffer zone, is to get the other people to get their cars out of the buffer zone.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow, sir. Okay, we're going to close the public hearing, and we're going to open it up to the planning commissioners. May I just say, Madam Chair for the, I mean, Madam Clerk, for the record, I did meet with Mr. O'Connor last week. We walked the property. We had a nice conversation, and he knows how I feel about this. And with that, I'll leave it open to my rest of the commissioners. Thank you. Commissioner Trujo.
Is, is this a, I know it's Lexus. Is this a Fletcher Jones property?
I'm sorry. I didn't.
Is Fletcher Jones part of the ownership of this property?
No, it's no longer. Fletcher Jones did own the property back in two thousand three until two thousand five.
So he's not part of the dealership?
Then that's part of the dealership.
Okay. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Commissioner Bonar, please.
I actually want to thank Mr. Farlow. His feelings are mine exactly. That, you know, first of all, it doesn't make difference what brand we're talking about. There's some brands that every time I go down the area where there's a car dealer and I see the cars parked over the curb, over the edge into the return for the street, I know it's illegal, and I should stop and do something either with that dealer or through the city. But it's wrong. And I think, I think you're right. We need to not allow you to do this and also take the others to task for still doing it and get it back to a presentable, I'm not going to shout louder than you position. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonar. And I just want to say for the record, the corridor between Rainbow Boulevard, all the way up to Durango on the north side of the street, my, our councilwoman takes great pride, as well as the councilman of that ward, at the amount of landscape that we've put in, which is beautiful. I drove it again today after I picked up my dog, and I thought, this is just glorious, all the landscape. And for us to do something differently would be to undo what we've worked so hard to achieve. So you will not see my support on this item, sir. Thank you.
One, one other thing. It happens on the south side as well, not just the north side, that there's people that do that, and illegal parking of vehicles.
While we're cleaning it up.
If there are no other comments, I'll make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
Thank you. That motion is for denial. Please vote. And that motion failed tonight. Thank you. It was a pleasure meeting you, sir. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you. Moving on now to Director's Business. Director's Business, number thirty-two, is DIR four, five, zero, seven, three. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency for a review of the final plan for the redevelopment of Area Two as a redevelopment area, Ward One. This is in Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward, and may we please have the staff report this evening? Would that be just you?
Yes. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, for the record, Bill Arntz, Director, Economic and Urban Development for the City of Las Vegas. This item before you is a follow-up to an item on April eighteenth, where the Commission heard our preliminary plan, and this item is to consider a final plan. If you are inclined to vote approval, then your recommendation would move forward to the City Council on June eighteenth. There would be a bill ordinance introduction on July eighteenth. And in the main meeting, there is a, actually a public hearing requirement at our City Council, and we're anticipating scheduling that for July twenty-fifth. Tying into the preliminary plan, which you recommended approval on, we did have some concern as staff on the expanse of how much area the staff was asked and directed by the City Council, acting as the Board of Directors for the Redevelopment Agency, to consider for adding to, into the redevelopment area by way of this expansion. So we actually hired a third party to do a peer review, Benner and Associates. I believe Commissioner Schlotman actually stated the same concern on the record at the prior commission meeting. And we looked specifically at four areas, and I'm going to show them over on the overhead here, hopefully. Oh, it's up. I'm sorry. The first area is the original area. In the original, the area that it's highlighted in area yellow is the area for Ward One, and then the gray parcels are the area which was the study for evaluation. So that was the original evaluation area. Forgive me, I can't see it on the overhead, so hopefully can. Forgive me, I can't see it on the overhead, so hopefully can thumb through here. The second area, what we did was, we looked at areas for elimination. So hopefully you're looking at a slide entitled Areas Considered for Elimination now? Back one. You want to use? Oh, that, that's fine. This slide, Areas Considered for Elimination, so the areas that are shaded in red, this was the areas that we asked our third-party consultant, Benner &amp; Associates, to study. So we asked the consultants to study these areas. And then the final slide is the final area for redevelopment. So going back to the prior slide, three of these areas were in residential neighborhoods and one was commercial. Staff's concern was that some of this area was not as blighted as some of the other area that was studied. And so we wanted to make sure that the area that we were concentrating on was the area that was experiencing the most blight, the area that could benefit most from redevelopment. So we studied these four areas and we agreed with removing three of the four areas. The one that we disagreed with the third-party review was for the fourth area, which was for the Richfield Residential Neighborhood Association. And I'm going to read staff's report, it should be in your backup as well, just to highlight why that was the case. The Richfield Residential Neighborhood Association is impacted by blighting conditions, which are outlined in state law. Those blighting conditions include age, obsolescence, deterioration, and dilapidation, mixed character shifting of uses. We found that that neighborhood consisted of that. It also found that there were depreciated or deteriorating values in the neighborhood. There's a growing or lack of utilization, property use, as well as a loss of population or use. A large portion of this neighborhood, as you may know, the Richfield neighborhood, has been acquired by a developer for potential future mixed-use development. The, the land holdings, a good portion of the land holdings have been purchased by Southern NV Rental Holdings LLC, which is affiliated with Fisher Brothers. Fisher Brothers is represented here tonight, so if you have any questions of Fisher Brothers as a property owner. Jennifer Lazovich is representing the property owner and she'd be glad to answer any questions. But because of the nature of this neighborhood really changing more of a mixed-use long-term, we believe that it's ripe for redevelopment. It does meet the conditions of the state law. And so we are recommending including this neighborhood in the expansion area. With that, I, staff recommends approval, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Is there any questions from any of the commissioners? We'll be happy, he'll be out, Mr. Arnt, Bill will be happy to answer them. Sir, Commissioner Schlotman, do you have a question?
Is this open to citizens' participation?
Oh, I'm sorry. I just blew right past you, Mr. Farlow. Excuse me. We'll open it now to citizens' participation, our dear friend, Mr. Farlow, I apologize. I was getting ahead of myself.
I'd like to know what Fisher.
State your name and address for the record.
Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I'd like to know from Jennifer what Fisher's outfit is going to do with that.
I bet Ms. Lazovich could answer that for you. Mr. Fisher? There you are.
No. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Scott Plummer, 9520 Bottle Creek Lane, City of Las Vegas, Nevada. I am here representing the First Presbyterian Church, 1515 West Charleston. We'll let Jennifer go next. I have just a concern, one of our parcels, we have five parcels there, it's a southwest corner of Charleston at Desert Lane, and one of our five parcels has been identified in the, in the redevelopment area and the other four not in the redevelopment area. The one that's identified there is 1620451002. We acquired that about 14 years ago for a parking lot. We consider it part of our campus, our, our entire property utilizes that for, for parking along Charleston. We, we certainly support the efforts of the city to redevelop the area. However, we don't feel that is a, that is a separate parcel from the rest of our land use and would, would respectfully request that it be removed from the district or from the redevelopment area, so it's consistent. If we do redevelop the area, we'll develop the entire five parcels. That, that's what.
So you prefer pulling it out versus adding the rest in, sir? Is that your concern?
That's what, that's what our board has authorized me to request, if that's okay.
Okay. We'll ask Director how someone goes about that request.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir, for coming in.
Madam Chair, through you, this item is considered by the Planning Commission this evening and then it's forwarded to City Council for final action. Upon the recommendation of the Planning Commission, we can certainly take a look at that request and then make alterations accordingly as that item is presented before City Council for final action.
I don't think that's asking too much to you, it's just a little piece.
No, and again, I'll defer to Director Arnt in looking at that specific parcel.
Director Arnt, could you look at that little parcel?
We, Madam Chair, we'd be glad to look at that parcel. And again, there, there is the public hearing, so I believe there's still time to remove the parcel. It's, the process, it's generally easier to remove a parcel than add a parcel.
Okay.
So we'll work with council to make sure that.
Okay, and could you get this nice man's phone number so he knows what's going on? Because I really think it's silly to leave half in and half out. I know that area quite well.
Yes.
So thank you very much.
We concur.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Bonar, Commissioner.
Again, because of my soft spot for.
Churches.
Is there some way we can capsulize the, the benefits that could accrue to a property that's within the redevelopment area, just so that church is not making a mistake by requesting?
It was my opinion there would be benefits for the church to have it all in versus all out, but I don't know that much about it.
For his benefit, can we get that stated?
Scott Plummer, again, we'd be happy to meet with representatives from the Planning Director's Office if that, if that could be a productive meeting, whether to go all in or all out. We just didn't want the half and half idea.
Right. I think it would be to your best interest, sir, to meet with them and see all the advantages that come with it or without it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Truesdale, sir?
From Mr. Arnt, through you, Madam Chair, some of these evaluation areas, could you, I know you use a third-party to, to look at some of these, but generally, when you talk about a redevelopment area with properties that are either blighted, transitioned, decayed, transitioning downward, whatever, I'd, I'd like to understand that analysis a little bit as it relates to properties around the Meadows Mall, which have gone through a lot of renovation and actually in a pretty, what I would see, an area that's, that's had pretty good reinvestment. And there's a couple other areas here that have some properties, projects have been redeveloped and are relatively new, and why would they fall within this redevelopment evaluation?
Thank you. Madam Chair, through you to Commissioner Truesdale. What staff does is we actually do a blight study or survey, and we've actually had staff go out and physically, do a physical survey of each parcel in the evaluation area. There are criteria, there are 11 different criteria in the state law to indicate whether or not an area is blighted or not. So it's not, we're not trying to make a pass/fail evaluation on every single individual parcel, but whether we're looking at a neighborhood as a whole. So we're looking at commercial corridors, we're looking at areas that may be experiencing decline or in decline, maybe they haven't hit rock bottom, but they're starting to experience decline. So we certainly looked at a lot of the old commercial corridors at the request of the council, Decatur, Carter, Charleston, Sahara, and we looked at the areas that were experiencing decline, disinvestment. Some may have had some recent investment, they may be well-maintained, but they may, may meet other criteria such as the shape of the lots. There's some parcels along Decatur, close to Charleston, that are professional office that are shallow in nature, there's high vacancy there, so they don't really lend themselves to commercial development. So there, there's no one single factor that's really the tipping point, it's really looking at those 11 factors, and we look at the area as a whole.
And the reason I ask this, and as a matter of being full disclosure, because I've disclosed before, I actually manage a property that's an out parcel of the Meadows Mall. And not looking at this from that perspective, but here's a property that's almost fully occupied, that they've spent a couple hundred thousand dollars renovating it, landscaping the property next door, and it's, and it's an incredible corner, or incredible parcel, three, four-acre parcel, right across from the entrance to Springs Preserve, which is, they had a quarter of a billion dollars' worth of investment. So I'd like to under, I'd like to better understand what that tipping point is. If you look at Decatur and Meadows Lane, where Cardenas, I think, is, they completely took that center, rebuilt it, and it's thriving with tenants and thriving occupancy. So sometimes redevelopment or blight is a self-fulfilling story. And I'm just, as a property owner in the valley, and I'd just like to understand what, for everybody, how we sometimes look at blight. I understand how we did it downtown in the early maps, and I understand when we went on the north corridor of, of Decatur and those were approved. But this is a little more difficult, because I, granted, there are some areas of Sahara that have some, some real impacts and some concerns, but there are some of these that are very vibrant, well-developed properties. You may not like the, the age of the Meadows Mall, but it's a fully occupied mall and thriving businesses. So what would be that net, that tipping point to call that a blighted area? I think that would make people understand this process a little better.
Thank you. Madam Chair, through you to Commissioner Truesdale, I'd like to invite Richard Atkins, who's with us tonight. He is on my team that actually led the team that did the field surveys. We did look at both sides of Decatur, so I would definitely concur with you that General Growth has done an excellent job maintaining Meadows Mall. The adjacent property owners have done a very good job maintaining their properties, but we, when we looked at the area, we looked at both sides of Decatur. So I'd like Mr. Atkins just to make a few comments, having done the surveys and looked at that area, as to what he found and what, what, how it met the areas of blight.
Thank you.
Richard Atkins, Economic and Urban Development Redevelopment Officer. When we went out and conducted the surveys, you know, we also assessed the desires of the council person to look at the various properties. And there had also been some talk about particularly the Meadows Mall area of being in, you know, being an older type of property, that there may be the need for reinvestment and reprogramming of that mall at some point in the future. So we, we took that into consideration for the whole area, along Decatur and the Meadows Mall area. Granted, there has been some improvement in, investment in the area, but we felt it was necessary and potentially a parcel to include into the, into the new redevelopment area.
Thank you, sir. Is that your question?
No, actually, it makes my question a little more involved. Just, the Meadows Mall is, is sold for multiples and has incredible value from, and each one of those individual parcels are owned by major retailers that are, have reinvested in some regards. So I guess, what are you looking for? What's your expectation of reprogramming a regional mall, a several hundred million-dollar investment today going forward? I mean, where's the incremental change that you think can be accomplished? I'm not saying that all of, most of your evaluation area, there's a lot of real thresholds for, for doing things, but the mall is something that, it's, it's in the top 20% of performing malls in the United States, according to General Growth. That's over $600 a square foot annually in sales. That's a dynamic mall. Now, whether it's pretty is a different issue. And if we're, if redevelopment or blight is a pretty thing, then that, then let's just say that's, that's what we're concerned about. But this is not economic blight. This is not a tax base that's deteriorated, it's not sales that have plummeted over the last couple of years, even with a down economy. And according to General Growth's own, own figures, they estimate 6 million people a year go to that mall. That is, if that's the evidence of a blighted property, then we should expand this map dramatically. That's all I'm trying to understand. You know, the YMCA, we just approved a school in there, it's doing, you know, the school is going to fit that, the city has a park there, and the YMCA is a phenomenal facility. To say those parcels fall within a blight, I think we have a, we have to come up with a better story when we're talking, what is, if it's economic blight, just pure pretty? You know, new architecture? Or is it, because we've approved a walkable community there? That's what I'm trying to get at. Like I say, some of these areas, yeah, I agree with you 100%.
Madam Chair, if I might just step in and perhaps address some of those questions. While Meadows Mall in its current configuration is currently successful, there is still the opportunity for redevelopment on the western side of the mall. They have vacant land immediately to the west of them. Looking immediately to the south, the former Sprint building is currently vacant and unoccupied. While the Cardenas Market has redeveloped that portion of the center, there's still the area to the east of it, which is doing okay, but could be doing better. And then as you go on the other side of Decatur, obviously that center has lost its vaunts, Opportunity Village has come in to fill that space, but there's some vacancies in both that center and the Target Center immediately to the north of it. So while the mall itself is doing fine, there are parcels immediately adjacent to it where they could benefit from redevelopment. And one of the purposes of doing the walkable community plan for that specific area was to reinvest in that neighborhood. One of the goals of the city is to look at its existing mature neighborhood and continue to reinvest in them so that they remain wonderful places to live, to work, to shop. And so I think that's one of the reasons why we are looking at this area, is that while certain portions of it are doing well, there are other portions where redevelopment funds that would be available through inclusion in the redevelopment area could assist in making the area even better than it is.
Thank you.
And my, my concern is, and it, it's my perspective, but if there's a limited amount of funds for redevelopment, however we do it, it, it shouldn't be for that one project that's, that's already worth several hundred million dollars. They, they're a private ownership, they have the ability to reinvest, they have owners that do, if encouraged, will reinvest in their properties. Those redevelopment dollars should be spent on the smaller property, you know, the people that can't raise, you know, accomplish redevelopment. And that's, that's where I think sometimes we get, the redevelopment is bigger and it dilutes itself, rather than saying, well, what can we accomplish? If we want to plan for the eventual development of a mall in Summerlin or a mall on, in, on Rampart, and we want to plan for what may happen or may not happen to this mall, they've already survived the biggest mall development in town, being the premium outlets, with almost no, or very little impact to their day, to their values. So I think the story should be to, is, because it's part of the revitalization area, the story should be, this mall is in the center of Las Vegas and it's doing good, and we want it to do better, but not calling it blighted. I, I just think that's, I think we're going, we're selling, sending the wrong story here. And I'll let it go at that.
Thank you, Commissioner Truesdale. Does anyone else wish to speak?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bonar, sir?
A couple of thoughts. I, I think we're missing some messages. One is, the, the message that I think the First Presbyterian Church needs to hear is, what are the benefits of being in it? Or how can you?
I agree with you on that.
Take advantage of it? But part two, I think there's some nuts and bolts of, you've only done the first cut of what areas you consider needing help. You still have to have, if I'm not mistaken, a building inspector declare any building inhabitable. So you've got a whole stage to go through before you look inside this, this strip of, of redevelopment area, before you can say individual properties, you know, aren't worth anything. say individual properties, you know, aren't worse, there are hazards, safety hazards, fire hazards, and need to come down. You know, some of that's going to happen, but the rest of it's going to stand. And yet those ones that stand have the ability to get financing or special treatment of some kind to better their existing condition. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, through you to Commissioner Bonar. That's part of the story. I think the important point to make is, as far as where we invest our money, there are built-in requirements in the law for us to invest in projects that need the money. There's a but-for test, meaning that does the property owner have the capacity to do it on their own? So certainly, Commissioner Truesdale did a great job explaining that Meadows Mall, General Growth, they're both are healthy. They probably don't need financial incentives. But we really looked at the neighborhood as a whole. So that's why we looked at, could the factors on the other side of Decatur start to bring down Meadows Mall over time? And I'm not sure if we got the exact area perfect or not, but that was the concern, that could the areas surrounding the mall and surrounding some of the healthy properties start to be a deteriorating influence or a blighting influence? So we can invest money in new construction. We can invest money in rehabilitation. Our money generally goes into infrastructure to make it easier for projects that need help to get done. I think City Attorney Jerwick did want to make a comment about the term blight, because it pains me somewhat as your Economic Development Director for the city to use that term at a public meeting, but that is the language that is in the state law. So blight means different things. It can mean physical dilapidation, but it can mean also economic decline. It can mean parcels that have been configured that just don't work anymore. If you look at some of the parcels near Charleston and Arville, the lots are so shallow, it's not really conducive to retail development or office development. So blight, unfortunately, that's the term that we're stuck with, and it is in the NRS.
I forgot jumping for just one second. I've litigated this for 15 years. After I was appointed City Attorney, condemnation of certain parcels where people challenged the term blight and the like. If you go back to 1987, that was when the redevelopment law was first put on the books of the state of Nevada. And it was right after that that the city activated its redevelopment agency, which caused us to have hearings like we're having right now for the original redevelopment area. Right smack in the middle of that redevelopment area is downtown Las Vegas. Almost everything in downtown Las Vegas is in the redevelopment area. And even at that time, the Golden Nugget, with its own money, had just put on a new facade and was building a new tower. And many would argue, how can you include that parcel in this area and call it blighted? And that's not the requirement of the law. So the Meadows Mall, very much like the Golden Nugget, very much like other things, there will be diamonds, you know, in these little areas that may be generally blighted. And it's unfortunate that we paint them with that broad brush. But keep in mind that that doesn't defeat the ability to put this in a redevelopment area if you so decide. And remember that there's a difference between an area and a project. After it's in the area, then the project's considered separately. And as the director just indicated, they're going to have to come in and show a but-for test, among many things. And one of the but-for tests is that we, without public assistance, without redevelopment assistance, we cannot do whatever it is that we want to do. Remodel, expand, landscaping, whatever it might be. And clearly, I think, under Commissioner Truesdale's example of the Meadows Mall, it's difficult to imagine how they would even qualify to be a redevelopment project, even though they would be in a redevelopment area. That's the only thing I wanted to put on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Jerwick, sir. Okay, does anybody else wish to speak?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'll keep it brief. But the redevelopment area helps out with quite a few things. And for this gentleman sitting out here, I would recommend meeting with Romeo, Rick, and Bill, because it can help with a sign, a sign grant or facade improvement. They can help you find property if you're wanting to build a certain project down here. There's all sorts of things that the redevelopment agency does to assist small businesses. And so, at the beginning, I was a little concerned, three, four, five months ago, when you all first brought this to us, because I thought it would redirect all of the redevelopment agency's efforts from downtown to this new redevelopment area in Ward 1. However, what alleviated those concerns was the fact that it's a new redevelopment area. So the funds that are being generated in Ward 1 will stay in Ward 1. And the funds that are being generated in downtown will stay in downtown. So the only other question, through you, Madam Chair, how do you plan on staffing up and being able to handle both redevelopment agencies, or both redevelopment areas underneath the redevelopment agency?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. We've added one staff person recently. There are economies of scale, even though it's a separate area, separate books, separate financial statements. Real estate is real estate. A project's a project. The same things that make the closed car dealership on Decatur Boulevard a tough project were the same things that made Neapolis a tough project, maybe still a tough project today. It's still the same process, the same programs and tools that we have, whether it be our Fast Track program, our VIP facade program. But there are some economy of scales and some efficiencies in running these programs. So we don't believe at all it'll detract from our efforts downtown.
Okay. Madam Chair, one more question. When I was reading through the blight study, you probably had 40 pictures in there, and it was a sofa sitting behind someone's house, and a gate that was falling off, and windows that were busted out, and you name it, a car up on blocks with no wheels. Isn't a lot of this a code compliance issue? And I know that we're having funding issues, and code compliance is more reactive than proactive. But can a small percentage of these funds be used for code compliance to put a code compliance officer in Ward 3, in Ward 5, in this redevelopment area, in Ward 1?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. We agree wholeheartedly. In fact, one of the reasons why we took those residential neighborhoods out of the redevelopment area, even though code compliance is a huge issue in a lot of those neighborhoods, we have other resources at the city. One of the things that we're doing for this upcoming budget year is we're allocating community development block grant funds, CDBG funds, to step up code compliance in those areas. Because that can go a long way to making sure these neighborhoods, particularly the residential areas, stay in a good condition and don't experience decline. So we are aware of the issue. We have a different resource to address the issue. And we'd like to preserve those redevelopment funds for the commercial projects.
Madam Chair, through you, how does a block grant assist with code compliance?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. It's actually an eligible activity under block grants. We're actually funding code enforcement officer in building and safety. So we're actually having extra manpower, extra staff out on the street, both responding to complaints, you're right, proactive. Code enforcement is tricky at best, but having more manpower means we can get out there quicker, respond to complaints quicker, and address small problems before they become big ones.
Thank you. I appreciate you, Rich and Romeo, coming out tonight. And I'll be supporting this matter.
Thank you very much for the nice presentation. Is somebody ready to make a motion on this? Commissioner Goines?
Madam Chair, on item 32, Abeyance DIR 45073, I make a motion, follows staff's recommendations for approval.
Thank you. The motion is for approval. Please vote. And that passes. Thank you for staying so late, and have a nice evening.
Madam Chair, that item goes forward to City Council on July the 18th.
Thank you. Moving on now to number 33, which is the text 45255, applicant owner city of Las Vegas to amend LVMC 19.06.050, tables 2 and 3 related to U undeveloped district accessory structures and building height, LVMC 19.06.060, tables 2 and 3 related to RE, RE residential estates, district accessory structures and building height, LVMC 19.12 related to permitted uses and definitions, standards, and requirements of various animal related uses, in an effort to consolidate categories into the animal keeping and husbandry use, and streamline standards and requirements. May we please have a staff report on this?
Madam Chairman, in an effort to reduce the number of uses within our land use table, we looked at various uses, and we looked at the animal uses within our code. We had six different uses. They were, some of which were very similar to each other. And we undertook a project to consolidate those uses. In reviewing those uses, we also looked at our accessory structures, where we have U undeveloped zoning and RE zoning lots. They're traditionally larger lots, where if a small ranch house upon them, where the accessory structures will exceed the primary dwelling unit. For instance, if you have a barn, if you have a horse corral, the entire corral is counted as part of the accessory structure. All of the dirt area and where the horses are, that's all counted. So we looked at that, and we looked at making some changes to that for our areas where we have horse property. So this text amendment allows for larger accessory structures in the U and RE lots that are currently allowed by code, while increasing the required minimum setback for such structures to reduce the impact on adjacent sites. Currently, the setback on accessory structures is three feet. We've increased it in this ordinance on U and RE to 10 feet. It also consolidates animal related uses from six to one, and provides relevant conditions in order to minimize land use conflicts with neighboring development. And also, we added a definition for pet to help clarify the intent of the word, as there have been issues in the past where individuals have said, well, this is my pet elephant. And we've defined that as being a household pet, so, to help clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward. If there is no one to come speak on this item, we will end the public hearing and open it up to Planning Commission for a possible motion. Byron.
I just wanted a quick question. When you talk about these structures, did we address the types of material, or what it should be built out of? Because I know we've had some issues where people come up with structures, these, whether prefab or metal buildings and things like that?
Yeah, we still require that the accessory structures be architecturally compatible to the primary dwelling unit in order to provide for that connectivity and continuity of the property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Bonar, sir.
I'm sure I read this wrong, but I read, I had a reference in there about keeping animals 1,500 feet away from an adjacent residential use.
That would be in regard to exotic animals, lions, tigers, and bears and such?
Oh, I'm glad it's not just horses.
Yeah, and that's the reference to that. Basically, we had a separate land use for exotic animals. We've combined that into all, into one, and called that animal keeping and husbandry, which covers it all. But if you're going to keep an exotic animal, you are required to keep that, that you have a 1,500-foot distance separation from parks and other places where people gather in large numbers.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonar. If there's anyone else, we'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Moody?
Go ahead.
Mr. Goines?
Happy to do it.
Oh, thank you.
Regarding item 33, text amendment 45255, move for approval.
Thank you. The motion is for approval. Please cast your votes. That motion passes.
Madam Chair, that item will go forward to City Council in ordinance form.
Thank you very much. Moving on now to our last item of the evening before citizens' participation, we have text 45385, applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas to amend the downtown centennial plan to revise the development standards for parking lots. May we please have the staff report, Mr. Rankin?
Actually, that would be...
Or Mr. Director Flynn?
That would be me.
That would be you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are proposing to amend the downtown centennial plan, and more specifically, the parking lot development standards within the downtown centennial plan to address a couple of issues that have come up recently. Number one, what we're proposing to do is to create a new category of parking lot called a special event parking lot. What has arisen is, relative to the First Friday events, we have some vacant parcels of land where people have been parking, but we don't have any way to actually permit that use. And so what we're proposing to do is to create a new category called a special event parking lot. It is limited to a maximum of six days per month. And so, again, there are limitations in terms of its use, only intended to be used relative to special events. In terms of the surfacing of that, essentially, it could be paved or unpaved, but is subject to the Department of Air Quality and Environmental Management standards. And so those parking lots will need to be reviewed by DACOM for dust control measures and have those properly in place. The next thing that we're proposing to do is relative to our existing temporary parking lot standards. In terms of the timeframe for temporary parking lots, again, those are considered to be interim uses of land and not a permanent use of land, and so they're limited to three years in terms of the approvals that we grant to them. The biggest change that we're proposing to make is relative to the streetscape or landscape standards that are required. Currently, the code requires that for a temporary parking lot, the property owner must install the streetscape, which means the sidewalk and the street trees that are immediately abutting the property. We've had a number of waivers requested from that requirement. And so in order to address those concerns or the cost of doing the streetscape, what we're proposing instead is basically a menu of options from which the property owner can select to provide some type of landscaping or screening on the property. And so what we're giving them the option of doing is either A, providing streetscape, B, providing some type of a perimeter landscape buffer with drought tolerant materials, C, they could provide interior parking lot landscaping, which would include trees, or D, to provide the downtown centennial plan fence to screen the perimeter of the property. And so essentially, we're giving applicants a menu of options to choose from in order to comply with some type of landscaping or screening for the parking lot. So there is some type of aesthetic consideration given to those temporary parking lots. So those are the changes that we are proposing this evening and would request your support of those changes.
Thank you, Director. I just want to say for the record that with these new special event parking lots, I assume there will be adequate handicap parking for the disabled in every lot, temporary special event or permanent parking?
With the temporary parking lots, they are not paved, they are not marked. So yes, there is handicap parking that could be provided there. However, be aware that the surfacing may not be appropriate, and there may be other locations which would be much more suitable for handicap parking.
Then I hope that there's proper signage to direct these people to those areas. Thank you.
Madam Chair, question for the Director. Do the approval of these lots, is this like, First Friday gets their approval for their area downtown that they do their events on? Is that the approval process, or does each property owner need to come in and...?
There's actually a couple of different ways to do that. Number one, they could do it through a special event permit. So First Friday, if they have vacant lots that they want to utilize for special event parking, they could include that as part of their special event permit. If an individual property owner wants to come forward and offer special event parking, then they would obtain a temporary commercial permit in order to do that. So one way or the other, there's a review process for them to go through.
And based on that, I'm going to abstain on this item, because I do have a lot that I believe has been utilized recently by First Friday. And I was under the impression that First Friday had the overlying approval. But if that, whether that's the case or not, whatever needs to be proper is fine. But I feel I am directly impacted by this ordinance, and I don't feel it'd be appropriate for me to vote on it in this context.
Thank you, Commissioner Truesdale.
Madam Chair.
If anybody else wishes to speak on this, Commissioner Bonar, sir.
Is the approval to be done administratively, or do we do public hearings?
It depends on the specific type of application. For a special event parking lot, that's an administrative approval. For a temporary parking lot, we do a minor site development plan review application, which is also an administrative approval, but does require a staff report and review by other city departments. And then a permanent parking lot is the standard public hearing process.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonar. If there's no other comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Through you to the Director. Just one question. Are there any limitations on signage, advertising, or sales, particularly when the property is not being used for special event parking?
Any signage on the property would be subject to the city's sign code, and so it would be administered... would be administered through the sign code.
Madam Chair, through you.
Yes.
Director—Director Flynn, you—or the code states that a temporary commercial permit for a year. So can you get a temporary commercial permit for a year and then pick the six days that you want on a special event license?
Yes, you can pick the dates that you're going to do that under the permit. Again, you are restricted to the maximum number of times, limited by the ordinance.
Would that require the same six days each month? Or if—
No, it does not. It doesn't have to be the same six days each and every month. Again, it's two.
Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Goines?
Madam Chair, move to approve item 34, TXT 45385, sent to all staff's recommendation.
Thank you. That motion is for approval. Please cast your votes. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Truesdale abstaining.
Madam Chair, I'm going to go ahead and abstain on this, too, since my patrons at Artifice might utilize some of these lots out of an abundance caution. I'll be abstaining on this matter.
Thank you. So that motion passes with Commissioner Truesdale and Commissioner Schlockman abstaining at this time. Thank you very much. We now move on to—do you want to say something else about that?
I was just going to say that this goes on to City Council in ordinance format.
I knew it.
Thank you.
We're moving on now, Mr. Farlow. The citizens' participation. Citizens' participation is public comment during the portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of any time by any speaker is allowed to be limited. Good evening, Mr. Jervik.
Madam Chairman, members of the Commission, I'll be very brief. This is not a presentation tonight, but rather an announcement that we are through the first phase of our redistricting process. Judge Kessler, our expert, has met with the City Council several times, individually and in groups of two, and he has arrived at what is in front of me now, the final map. The final map was introduced at the last City Council meeting by way of ordinance and was put on hold. The reason is, unlike past redistrictings, this time, there are five precincts that are either going to be created or broken up to make new boundary lines between the wards. Because we're in the middle of an election cycle right now, those precincts cannot be completed until after the November 6 elections. So anticipating that that's not going to be a problem—we've already talked to Laurie Lomax, the registrar—he can do it. It's administrative, but he can't do it until November 6. What we're going to do is present this map to you now. I'll let you know that at the end of August, between August 27th and 29th, there will be a public hearing in this council chambers sometime in the evening, probably around 6:00. Between now and then, the map before you is going to be on display in the city clerk's office, so any member of the public can come by and see it. After that public hearing on August 27th or through 29th, or whatever night that might be, it will then be referred back to the City Council, which will have a recommending committee of the whole. They will meet in late September, early October, and they will vote as a whole as a recommending committee. After that, it will go back to the City Council. And we're hoping it'll be November 7th will be the final vote. That's the day after the election. But that may not be enough time for Mr. Lomax to push the magic button to create the new precincts. If it isn't, then it'll be the meeting after the 7th, and that'll be the final approval of the map. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Again, we're on agenda for this night. There's no discussion tonight, but I just wanted, by way of information, to start putting that out.
Thank you, Mr. Jervik.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.